Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to see your house full. We're gonna start tonight with prayer, and I'm gonna leave it. Then we're gonna do pledge. Those who would like to participate with me, please join in. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts of all of the violence that yet continues to plague our city. We are so, Father, come with heavy hearts because there are decisions that we have to make, and they may not be accordance into others liking, but, Father, we're doing the best that we can. Father, I ask you to put a heads of protection around all of our workers, our city manager, and everyone in the city of Saginaw. We want you to breathe life into these dry bones so that we can all live and shall not die. Father, we ask that you cover us, cover our city with peace and love. These things we ask in the mighty name of Jesus. We're gonna do the pledge now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, good evening. This is a public meeting, and the audience, I'm asking you to remain from speaking and interruption, booing, and disturbing during the meetings. I've got a little housekeeping to do. Please work with me, not against me. Those who have phones especially, my council members, I need you to put them on vibrate. Audience, I still need a phone, so I'll confiscate phones when they go off. So if you've got your phone on, please put it on vibrate for me. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash is excused. Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present, one excused.
Thank you. And do we have any announcements?
I do. Want to remind everyone that your yard waste is collected on the same day as your trash day, and you must use a separate yard waste container. If it's not in the paper trash or yard waste bags, and you use a container, you have to put a yard waste sticker on it. And those stickers are available in my office, City Clerk's office, during regular business hours. And Mayor, we do have a proclamation tonight. It's declaring April 29th of 2022 as Arbor Day.
We will have Councilwoman Sylvia reading that proclamation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
City of Saginaw, proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and for our fires. Trees also increase property value, enhance the income vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. In 2021, the city of Saginaw, Street Section of the Right Way Division also pruned 93 trees and removed 221 trees. Now therefore being resolved, I Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the city of Saginaw. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 18th day of April in the year of our Lord 2022. Sign. Mayor Brenda F. Moore, councilpersons Michael D. Balls, Mayor Protem, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Oystash, Autumn Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II. And Timothy Morales, city manager. Thank you.
I don't know. Do we have anyone here that will accept it? Thank you, Ms. Beth. So we're gonna start down here, and then we're gonna come on down.
You're welcome.
All right. Ms. Beth, I don't want you to walk away. I know that some of us probably think that the trees wasn't important, but I need them to understand it does a lot more than what we think it does besides shade. There's some good in the trees. So, Ms. Beth, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem Balls, and city council members. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Public Service Department, Streets Section. 2021 was the 17th year in a row that the city of Saginaw was recognized as Tree City, USA City by the Arbor Day Foundation. This is due in part to the hard work of the Streets Section of the Public Services Department for their maintenance of over 50,000 right-of-way trees with very limited resources. This is not an easy task. Just to reiterate, 93 trees trimmed or pruned and 221 trees removed in 2021. They also planted 16 trees in the right-of-way in 2021. You see the disparity with how many are removed and how many are planted. If you know of any resident or business owner that would like to have a tree planted in the right-of-way, please have them contact the Streets Section at 759-1695. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at public hearings.
The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole, for council to hear the importance provided by the speaker for consideration regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers are limited to their remarks to the subjects of the public hearing only. Please, we'll begin by, you will begin by stating your name, your position, and whether you support or you're in opposition of the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be allowed 10 minutes. You're considered the main speaker. Therefore, after that, everyone else has three minutes. The public hearing is not a question-and-answer period. Therefore, questions must not be directly to individual councilmember staff or the audience. So let me just sum that up real quick. This is not question and answers. You state what it is, and we need you to state it. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our public hearing tonight is in regards to a request for an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 2138 North Carolina Street.
Is there anyone here to speak? We have Ms., I wanna call her Miller, but it's Zimmerman.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city manager, and city staff. My name is Cassie Zimmerman. I work for Saginaw Future, and I have been working with Larry Holman, who is the owner and developer of the project here. He came two weeks ago to council to speak to you guys, and he was not able to make it tonight. So I'm going to just fill you in on a few things. So this project is going to be taking place at 2138 North Carolina Street. That is the former Ferbringer School. It is a two-story, 18,000-square-foot building that was built in 1930s. When we brought, myself and Bob Goleen, city planner, have brought Larry to this property back in about September of last year and walked through the property, he pictured exactly what he wanted. He was so excited to be able to reuse this property as an assisted living center. They have since found a local engineering firm, D&amp;M Site, to be able to begin the plans, which hopefully, if this obsolete property rehabilitation act is approved, he will be able to move forward and bring plans to the Planning Commission for approval. So it will eventually be a 42-resident assisted living care facility. So that will be reusing the existing building, the way that it is, and just updating it to provide the proper to health care that they need for the assisted-care living facility. This will bring 26 good-paying jobs in the health care industry to Saginaw, resulting in over $600,000 worth of spending on public goods and services every year. I will be here at the very end of the meeting if you guys have any other questions, but I think we pretty much covered it the last time, so just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on this matter? Is there anyone else to speak on this matter? For the final time, is there anyone else to speak on this matter? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, moved. Support.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? No. We're gonna call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Madam Clerk.
We are now at public input.
This is the fun part of my day. I'd like to welcome all of you who signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you're saying. You can, you will be called to the podium by the clerk. Speakers, you're limited to three minutes, which is being timed by the clerk. So be sure you cover your main points. Once again, we will be courteous and respectful to the members of the public, to those who are watching on SGTV, and to the council, so that we can give serious considerations to your concerns. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Pastor Herbert Morse Jr. Don't see him. I don't believe he's here. Let's go to Megan Cottington Heath.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and esteemed council members, I'm excited to be here to talk tonight. I'm here because I'm running for circuit court judge in Saginaw County. My name is Megan Cottington Heath. I tell people it's really long. I know it doesn't fit on my kids' jerseys. Just remember the Heath bar, and you're halfway there. That's all you have to do. I live in the Adams, or I live on Adams in the Heritage Square neighborhood, and I'm a proud member of that neighborhood association. I'm running for circuit court judge because I think we can do better for the kids in our county. I think we can make things a lot less adversarial. The position open is for a family court, so that's going to be things like custody, child support, divorce. And right now, things are very adversarial, and I can say that they've been adversarial for a very long time. The reason, one of the biggest reasons I decided to run too is that, and this is not, I'm not making this up, when I was 12 years old, I decided I wanted to be a judge because my parents split up when I was nine. They didn't finish their divorce until I was 12. And I was like, I'm never gonna let other kids go through this, right? Then I found I had to go to law school. That's a big bummer. It was expensive. Anyway, I can tell you, in my work, for 12 years I've practiced, and I primarily practice in this area, and I can tell you, nothing has changed from when I was 12. We start off with parties getting so adversarial at the beginning that by the end, we have parties that are still adversarial when their daughter is 39 years old. You know, we don't want our kids having their parents come to their band concert, and all they're worrying about is mom and dad. We don't want mom and dad at their wedding, and all they're worrying about is mom and dad. And mom and dad don't want that either, right? They want, we all want it to be a nice event. We all want to get along. I think we can do that better with a lot of things like mediation or alternative dispute resolution right off the bat. It's not get people angry right in the beginning. I'm also a trauma-informed person. I have had training on trauma, and divorce is a traumatic experience for both the children and the adults. So approaching people, the trauma-informed response is so important. People in trauma mode don't use their rational brains, and I think that's why in family law, we see so many good people at their worst, because they can't rationally think what they're doing. So we've gotta find a way to pull them in, and mediation and alternative dispute resolution are great ways to do that. Another reason I'm running is that I believe I'm a 21st-century candidate. There are a lot of different types of families nowadays. There are parents who have, there are families with mom and dad, there are families with dad and dad, families with mom and mom, grandparents raising kids, there's also aunts and uncles raising kids. I myself am married to a woman. We have three children. My wife works for the city of Saginaw Fire Department, and I can tell you, I represent a lot of clients who don't fit that traditional mom-and-dad family norm, and I have a lot of experience with it. And I think it's important to have a judge who also has experience with that. And then I want to end with this. So in 2019, I was awarded the pro bono attorney of the year award in Saginaw County.
Time.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Motion takes center time for one minute.
You better give me a phone. I already know. It's a motion on the floor.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Wait. Did you get it, Ms. Beth?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I won the pro bono attorney of the year award because I've been devoted every year that I've practiced to 100 years of pro bono work, 100 hours of pro bono work a year, and that is a lot. Most attorneys don't even do 30. And there's a plaque outside the courtroom that I would practice in that has my name on it. I don't know what's better than having a judge presiding over the people in front of them with a plaque outside her courtroom showing her commitment to equal justice for everyone, regardless of their, regardless of their income, their faith, anything. So thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. If you have more questions, I'm happy to speak with anyone after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Farrington Douglas. Good evening.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and manager, city manager, and employees. I'm here representing Urban Youth Tennis Foundation, Garber Courts. We just finished a building, and we're in the process of opening. And I'm here to just say thank you for all the help we've received from the city and the council, and we're gonna have our grand opening on June 10th, which is a Friday, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. We're going to have food trucks, we're gonna have, we're flying in a speaker from South Florida, who was a former touring pro, and we're gonna have pickleball, we're gonna have exhibition matches, and we will send specific invitations to, particularly to the mayor and the manager, but all are invited. Let's see, so next, so our website is now up. It's garbercourts.org. There's also another address you can use. There's racket-sports.org. And I don't see, my brother from another mother, who is Phil, he has been very, very helpful to us with all the different things that we run into. He's our go-to person for the city. And again, we just, we want to thank you so very much for helping us. I think last week, I mentioned something about the amount being 2.5, 2 million dollars that we raised, and with your assistance, it's really more like 3 million dollars. I think the final portion of that, which will take place probably beginning, maybe even this week, is the parking lot that is for Henderson Richmond Center and for Garber Courts. And I just thank you so very much. We have a special event coming up on May 14th, which is a Saturday from 12:00 to 1:30. We'll be having free tennis lessons. If you want to go to our website, there's a form you can fill out there so that you can get registered for it. Otherwise, just come and hang out with us. Again, thanks so very much. It's an honor and a privilege to be a part of the city of Saginaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Debbie Melkonian.
Debbie Melkonian, president of the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I live at 2116 Adams Boulevard. Been a while since I've been here, but I'm back, so. Currently, there are 15 neighborhood associations within the city of Saginaw, overseen by Darren Jerome from the inspections Department. Along with Darren, there are quadrant leaders, and I am putting the challenge out there to all of you guys to possibly adopt a neighborhood and assist the leaders of the neighborhood with questions, concerns, spokesperson, and to get what they're interested in having done, done. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. Tomorrow is our NAG meeting, and we only meet every other month, but tomorrow we'll see actually how many associations are up and running, and hopefully, there'll be leadership from each of these associations. I know that in grants and in proposals, you know, everybody writes about without the importance of neighborhood associations, we couldn't do this. And it's hard to believe that, you know, that people really do put an emphasis on the existence of neighborhood associations. They're a vital part of this community. They need to run and have more participants and people stepping up to the plate. I don't know if landlords could give an incentive by paying somebody that rents a property within a neighborhood association $25, let's say, to attend a meeting. Just be aware that they exist, and the word needs to get out there. Let's see. That pretty much, my main thing is, we'll know more tomorrow after the NAG meeting, and hopefully, these associations can rely on your help and support in continuing our operations and make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Tobias.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk about something in the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association, representing as the block captain of Lockwood. You should have a hand, it's in the packages, I think. There's a handout. The second page is the tar paper house. We've been looking at it for four years. I've been following it up with the land bank, I've been funding the city, and I'm asking for some assistance in trying to get the house down. The neighbor is willing to buy the property. The taxes haven't been paid since July 25th of 2019, so it's met the two-year requirement. I've met with Darren Jerome. I have met with everybody I can meet with to try to get this to happen. Neighbors come by, people from Adams Boulevard come in and say, what's going on with that house? Why is it still sitting there? The city has the money from the insurance company to tear the house down. I'm just asking for some assistance, if there's anything we can do. I've spoken with the owner of the house. The owner doesn't want the house. That's why he stopped paying the taxes. He initially wrote the city and asked to give it back after it burned because he was selling that land contract, and the resident torched it, but the city couldn't take it back at that time, so he stopped paying the taxes because he was told if he did that, then the city would have to take it back. And I spoke to the owner probably last fall. He said he wrote a letter to the city that he's giving it back, and I don't know what happened with that. I talked to the neighbor next door. He still wants it as of last week. So I'm just looking for any assistance in getting 226 Lockwood torn down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Minister Wesley Willis. Not seen him come forward. Let's go to Nicholas Hurd.
These are a handout?
Yes. Yes. Good afternoon, council. Mayor.
Hold it, please, so I can set your timer.
Okay. For sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thanks. Good afternoon again. Good evening to everybody here, you guys included. My name is Nicholas Quazy Alexander Hurd. I'm the founder of the Running River Collective. We're a nonprofit organization that brings mindfulness to different communities, including the Saginaw Public School District. And I'm here today to just kind of put the word out and also a call to action to find more support in some of the initiatives that we are currently doing and we're currently looking to do by the end of this year. A little bit of background on who we are. We're a group of Saginaw natives that get together, and we're looking for ways to re-energize and revitalize some of the things happening in the city. There's a lot of good things that are happening in the city. Sometimes the feedback amongst the community is a breakdown in communication and finding out about these activities. And there's also, at times, a lack of comfortability to enter these spaces without either having someone that you know, or feeling invited, or feeling welcome to these public events. So that's one thing that we've been tackling over the past year. We're looking to cultivate more of a sense of community through activities, through discussions, and through cleanups. We actually have a cleanup scheduled this Saturday for the parks around the area. We're gonna start with Rainbow Park this week, and then we're going to Crayola Park two weeks from that. So these are initiatives that we already have been going, and they've been all community organized and community-led thus far. Some of the pillars of us at the Running River Collective are mindfulness, education, and connection. So we use mindfulness as an umbrella to understand different practices such as yoga, meditation, and also allowing people to dialogue and workshop just the stress that we've all been dealing with, not just the past two years, but the same kind of stresses we deal with in a life cycle, from elementary to high school to higher education, to then trying to integrate yourself as an adult in a community. You know, I'm sure, pretty sure everyone here, for the most part, has a full schedule. For the most part, you're probably supporting dozens of people in your life, and so usually, we're the last people to check in on ourselves, you know, our oneself. So that's one thing that we do within our organization, is to remind people that they can check in on themselves, that they can take time to breathe, to find stress relief, and it's actually not taking away from their activities, but actually enhancing all the other great things that you're doing in your day. So this is something that we want to continue to do. A lot of people just don't have the permission, they don't give themselves the permission to take that break, and so through our workshops, through our initiatives, it houses the space that people can interact and dialogue, and just come together as a community, things that you all have been doing, that these people have been doing, and just we want to continue to pour energy. Sometimes the narrative is that everybody leaves Saginaw and they never return, but there's a group of people in their late twenties, their thirties, and their forties, and their fifties, and they're all excited and energized, and they're ready to go. So the more we can get support from you all, the more we can get the word out, the more we can make these things happen. Do I have any more time?
Five seconds.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Fenobia Dallas.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Fenobia Dallas, and my address is to Shelley Court. I wish to address the council on Resolution 2, authorizing the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to pay for the general governmental services to the extent of lost revenues and employee workers' compensation and medical expense due to the COVID-19 virus. I am a member of the ARPA Advisory Committee. The purpose of the ARPA Advisory Committee is to provide input regarding potential projects or category spending for which the city of Saginaw may use ARPA funds. The resolution adopting the formation of the ARPA Advisory Committee stated that the ARPA Advisory Committee will be responsible for providing input from various communities of interest that the members may represent. Once the information is gathered, the committee will formulate a recommendation for a strategic funding plan that considers the community priorities established by the city council. The committee will prepare recommended funding priorities for consideration by the city council. On March 11th, 2021, This will leave a balance of $25,635,746 for potential projects or category spending for which the city of Saginaw may use ARPA funds. I hope that the input from various communities of interest that the ARPA Advisory Committee members represent will translate into recommended funding priorities for consideration by the city council. I thank you for allowing me to speak for you, to you before this.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lance Cope.
It's greeting to the mayor, greeting to the pro temp, greeting to the council members and staff. Leasing the Star's bus station at parking lot for a dollar, I'm saying this to the whole city of Saginaw, I'm speaking to myself as well. Before anybody buy gas, something to eat, before you buy anything, we should get the youth back up and running first. How can the future be planned in Saginaw without the black children in the low-income part of the community? The future I see for Saginaw now, God will punish us all to keep moving around transacting money, disgusting business, and to not notice the blood that's being shedded on the east side of the bridge. The worst thing I seen in life was my two first cousins, dressed out for a funeral. Richard Townsend, DeMarco Baskin. DeMarco lived with me. I was scared to open his room door, I sweated out my sheets every night. I had my heater on 80 degrees, and the summer from the chills of his death hit my body. I went to eat, I lost 26 pounds. It felt like my life turned into sawdust. Couldn't nobody help me. I went to God, I prayed, just give me the strength I need to get to drink one glass of water and eat one oatmeal pack. I did that for a week. I cut my TV off, certain movies bring back memories. I went play my game, that's all we used to do. This part of life I'm telling you about, probably 95% of the teenagers in the low-income black community done experienced that feeling. Every day it's a chance somebody catch it. It's like a disease. The Civil Ten would be the cure to some of our problems. The other rec centers need to be open as well, so we can teach the youth unity and how to love. The Civil Ten would be the start, the most historical gym in the city that would save lives. Every day the doors closed is no help to the community to save a life. Neighborhood revitalization mean, if poverty is a disease that infects an entire community and a form of unemployment and violence, falling schools and broken homes, then we can't just treat those symptoms in isolation. We have to heal that entire community, and we have to focus on what actually worked. Barack Obama, July 18th, 2007. I didn't come here today to ask for no grant money. Just please take into consideration to opening the doors. How can Saginaw be great with the lost souls hovering the city? I willing to volunteer work six days a week, Monday through Saturday, 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., to put a deposit down on my ticket to heaven, and many others to help save our youth. It will be a blessing from God to see the children in the low-income black community, learn skills and trades, get a chance to build with the new Delta program downtown, build with the new up-and-coming future powder street plans for the future. Civil Ten could offer those trade programs. If we all honor a good God, remember, don't leave the youth behind. No unity, no prosperity.
We can't do that, as bad as we want to. We can't do that, okay? Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Kirven Merrell.
Greetings, I'm Pastor Baba Kirven Merrell. Greetings Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Temp, Mr. Ball, council members, extreme council members. I know a lot of you, city manager. I don't know, probably about four months ago, I received a letter dated January 19th, which it was saying that it received, excuse me, my voice is a little hoarse, you know, yesterday, Easter Sunday, I was going about hollering yesterday. My voice real sore. So in that letter, it made it clear that at some point forthcoming, there would be more information about the ARPA fund. I represent the Saginaw African-American Cultural Center, in which we came here several months ago and asked this council, excuse me, that they would allocate funds to us to help us get the Longfellow Elementary School to make it Saginaw's first African-American Cultural Center. If any of you all had an opportunity to look at our proposal, the proposal has many umbrellas or tentacles to it, of which this community oftentimes come up here and say they want to start. I'm offering again that if they would collaborate with us, the Saginaw African Cultural Center, we would definitely make a space for them so that they can run their programs out of our building. So again, just come here seeking more information. When you all get a time, please let us know what we need to do. We're kind of like in limbo since we submitted that proposal, we have not heard nothing. We definitely still on fire. We definitely want this wonderful program in our community. As you know, our main gist is that this cultural center will provide positive self-imagery in our community, those visionaries who have already paved the way, as well as the new ones, whether it's Draymond Green or Ma Woodley or whoever, will have a place in this center where they can be visible for our youth to see and our adults. There's so much rich heritage in our community. It's a shame that we don't already have a cultural center, a museum, in place where people can come and view our visionaries. And not only that, we're gonna give all type of programs from gang, y'all know, I did a lot of this stuff, I wrote the book on gang, anybody want a copy? I got the book on gang, gun violence prevention, ex offender, my list go on and on. All I need is you all to help me get this off the ground. I believe in y'all, as y'all have believed in me over the years. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Felicia Hogan.
Good evening. To Madam Brenda Moore, Pro Temp Mayor Michael Balls, City Manager Tim Morales, and members of the council. My name is Felicia Hogan, a member of the Saginaw African-American Cultural Center, under the direction of Pastor Kirven Merrell. We come to make an appeal to the city council to remember our proposal for the Longfellow School to be used as a facility for empowering our youth and the people of our community. We have us to have a safe place to come to and make positive lifestyle changes under experienced leadership, to be instrumental in changing lives of people on a downward spiral, to give them a better life and a positive hope for their futures instead of death and destruction. We have submitted our proposal declaring our detailed plans and intentions for the betterment of our people and our community to thrive, live, and offer positive opportunities to grow, change, and have hope for healthy futures. The Saginaw African-American Cultural Center has waited patiently for your support to help attain the Longfellow School. This building is essential to our accomplish, to accomplish our mission to save lives. We would hope that saving lives in our community and bring forth renewed life to our city is worthy enough to support. Thank you for your time and the listening here, and may the city invest in our communities.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edward Connolly.
Good evening. First off, sorry for my phone. I thought I was technologically advanced, but I guess not. First off, I just want to say thank you for giving me time to speak. I'm not a city resident. I actually am a resident of the township. I've looked at property in the city, but my realtor advises me against it. That bothers me a great deal. I came tonight because I'm concerned. I'm very concerned as someone who was born in the city, grew up in the township, actually went to Delta for a little bit, took a class, went to U of M, and ran away to California. I'm the son of Florence Connolly and the late Peter Connolly, the son-in-law of the late Gary Beerrline, and my mother-in-law is Patricia Beerrline. I learned a lot from my mother, who has been a Saginaw Township trustee for 16 years. And when I told her I was hanging out at city hall, her first question was, "Why?" I said, "Well, Mom, they have $50 million. We better figure out what they're gonna do with it." Because the township didn't get 50 million, Thomas Township didn't, et cetera, et cetera. When I started, I moved back two years ago, because as the one gentleman said, "People flee." I wanted to do everything to get away from Saginaw, even though I'm very proud to be from here, as I've had to explain to people in the state of California. When I started coming to city council, I'm kind of glad that I had to take time to ask your wonderful clerk to speak. I see a lot of issues that need to be addressed, not only by the council, but by your city manager, as well as other city departments. First off, the Green Zone. I'm not sure why it's really called the Green Zone. I don't like the term "first ward." I sat next to a gentleman, I said, "What do you call it?" He said, "The northwest," I believe, or the northern part. I don't understand why it's being rezoned, who asked for the rezoning? I personally have left this meeting and gone and talked to residents. That was an area that was off limits to me as a child. It's free to go there now. It's safe, but you have homes that need to come down. There's money that the city has that should be used to take down those homes. There is a liquor store across from Powertrain. Down the street from the liquor store is a home with 13 television sets in the yard. Why? There's a home further down that street with liquor, a lot, I'm sorry, not a home, with liquor bottles littered.
Motion to extend this time for a minute and a half.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Can you hold on one minute to let her get the time together, sir?
Yes.
You ready, Ed? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So when I walked around the Green Zone, I met with a couple who live on Syracuse, Loretta and Vernon, I forgot their last name. When I spoke to them, I said, "Tell me about your neighborhood." They, they're a second-generation homeowner. The father who built the home worked at Powertrain, which was at one time a different name. So did Vernon. He wanted the lot next door, but the land bank wouldn't sell it to him. Don't know why. They then told me to go talk to Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor is 100 years old, and she lives on 9th Street. Have any of you talked to Ms. Taylor? Has anyone in the city? I know you guys have mailed out postcards and different things, had community meetings, but why does it take me getting out on my street, on footstep, to look at the neighborhood? This neighborhood was the home of Stevie Wonder. I think even Stevie Wonder, despite his disabilities, could see without even opening his eyes the trash and the litter that needs to be cleaned up by the city. It irritates me to a great deal that I come home and see disarray. I don't get it. So I ask that, as I continue to come down here and continue to ask, that these funds, this ARPA money that's sitting there, not spent, needs to start being spent today, not a year from now. There has been 20...
That's your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Candy Slav. Candy Slav, is she in here?
Hmm.
Okay. Let's go to, oh, I did skip Larry Campbell, but he did let me know he was not gonna be here tonight.
Okay.
Apologize for that. Let's go to Jeffrey Bulls. Oh, let me set the timer, Jeff, before you start.
No problem.
I'm still back on a minute and a half here. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Good morning to city council, city staff, city manager. I come here today to first report out, we had a community meeting on this past Saturday regarding the community, the rezoning initiative on the North Washington Corridor. Proud to report that that meeting was, again, a success. It was the second of two meetings, and you know, the reason that we called those meetings was to actually get the community involved, to actually get the people of the community involved in the rezoning conversation, because that hadn't happened. And thankful to Councilman Williams and, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Flores and Ms. Monique for this, you know, coming to the second meeting. We had a robust discussion, and after those two meetings, I think it's abundantly clear that the community doesn't want rezoning to happen in their area. And, you know, in my years of politics, and what I, how I view politics is that politics are about the people, and the people elect the people that are before me, and if the people say they don't want a certain initiative, it's imperative that their elected officials stand behind them and support them. And I'm here today to reiterate that fact. It is imperative, it is imperative, that when you guys vote, and I assume you're voting on it today, that you vote no and you support the community. And not only that, when we leave here today and beyond today, let's then have another discussion about what can happen in that community. You know, as Mayor Moore always says, "We're in a new season." And that new season is collaboration, and not just hearing them and then doing something else. No. When you collaborate, you listen to the people that vote for you. The people that vote for you tell you what they want. In turn, you do what they ask. That is politics 101. I respectfully ask that you listen to the people and do what they ask. They do not, they've been through enough in that community. We all know what's happened over there, pollution and just being ignored for decades. Don't add to their frustrations. Take this opportunity to team up with them, finally, and clean up the neighborhood. That's what they're asking for. They don't want it to be rezoned, they want it to be cleaned up. And if, even if you were to bring a new business in there, you would have to clean it up first, so why not just clean it up? And don't do the rezoning as they ask, and then get back with them and see what they want, and then we can come up with something.
Motion to extend this time for one minute.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Okay. Thank you for your time. Second thing I wanted to, to address, it's another thing that you're, you're gonna be deliberating over today, which is, you know, a couple of things, and Dr. Dallas made mention of it, which is the money to, you know, we've had this conversation over the last year or so about revenue loss. I'm also on the ARPA committee, and I want to thank you guys for voting me onto the ARPA committee, I appreciate it. It's a pleasure to serve. In regards to that, that revenue loss, we haven't had a chance to really go over that. And, you know, when, when this ARPA committee was formed, we were under the understanding that we would be able to deliberate over things first. You guys have the final say, of course, but, you know, we represent certain communities, you know, we, communities of interest, so I won't ask for anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
In regards to that, that revenue loss, we haven't had a chance to really go over that. And, you know, when, when this ARPA committee was formed, we were under the understanding that we would be able to deliberate over things first. You guys have the final say, of course. But, you know, we represent certain communities, you know, we, communities of interest, so I won't ask for anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Council members, remember you have three minutes as well to speak. We will begin tonight with Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Merry Christmas, everyone. There's snow out there. And I was walking here, and then, uh, thank you to my friend Christina from, I used to work with her over at songs. Her and mom picked me up and drove me about 25 feet over into City Hall. So, uh, yeah, hopefully we're gonna turn a corner there. But, in all seriousness, we had another shooting. It was of a young woman who's pregnant. If anybody has any information, please call Crime Stoppers at 1-800-422-JAIL, which is 5245, or you can call the Saginaw Police Department at 989-759-1289. The Cinco de Mayo, de Mayo parade is coming up. They moved the location of the beginning of the parade over to Hoyt, and we need additional volunteers. I had spoken with the, the director of the parade, Tina Rivera, this afternoon, and I said, "You know, Tina, do you have any volunteers?" She said, "Yeah, we have one, uh, you." And so we need additional volunteers, please. This is the, the first year that it's gonna be coming back in two years. It's a big, big deal to the Mexican-American community. Please reach her at 989-293-0329. I'm happy, volunteer spots look like showing up around 8:30 and helping to direct traffic and just participating in, in the overall festivities. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Also, we lost a great Mexican-American Saginawian, his name is Mario Sosa. He was a city employee for a long time with the planning commission. He passed away last week. I'm gonna be attending his funeral tomorrow, but I'm very close with his family, so I wanted to kind of let them know that the city of Saginaw is thanking him for his service, and we are acknowledging him and his life that he dedicated to the city. If anybody needs a COVID test, I took one about an hour before I got on my walk. It's very important, I feel very, very good when I get a negative COVID test. They're giving them out for free, so if anybody needs one, call 1-800-232-0233. And, Mr. Hurd, I'm down for a mindfulness workshop. I would love to have that. And then the rest of the, the people that had spoken for the public comments, I hear you. I've been kind of concentrating on certain aspects of the agenda, and I look forward to talking further about it in public soon. Today, in a couple minutes. And that's all I have to say.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, yes, ma'am.
George, hold on for a minute, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. Councilman Flores said Merry Christmas. I've been saying Happy Sprinter all day, just because you just don't know where we are right now, but it's great to be here this evening. I don't have much to say this afternoon, this evening, which is a surprise, but I'm glad to see Mr. Hurd, who's contacted me and just shared with his heart about some of the young 20 and 30-year-olds who's here in our community. And typically, we here, as you said earlier, a lot of people talk about us moving, but a lot of us are here, raising our families, starting families, committed to this community. So I'm glad that you all came out and talked, and hope that we get some support for you all. I will say also, just hearing, thank you to all of our public speakers. Ms. Debbie, I did email you about coming to one of your meetings, I'm just looking back to see the next date, so I do want to follow up with, I'll follow up with you today about that. But again, thank you for speaking this evening, for just hearing all of our speakers. I think one of the common things I heard was communicate. And I don't know how we fix that. I, I don't get paid $50 a meeting, but it's something that we really have to invest in and look at. And whatever we've been doing to communicate, apparently that may not be working. And I think it's time for us to reevaluate, and I, I think that's okay. I think that's okay. Where we are looking at change and things like that, the gentleman talking about a house, and you've been contacting the city, as a city councilman, I don't know that, those things, but I trust my city, the city staff, that they are working, so I can't question that. But the common thing I do hear is communication. And so I do encourage and I hope that we together, as a community, I talk about unity, and I stand for that, but communication is very big to me, and I hope that even if I can, as a council member, communicate better, please let me know. I do not know everything, and my first answer is probably gonna be, "Let me contact the city manager," because I don't contact city staff. That is not my job, and I want to stay in my lane, so I appreciate it. But again, however I can do, to do anything, to help communicate better, I would love to do that. And I think our city staff is doing a great job with what they have, because remember, we are our staff as well. But if there are ways that we can improve, I hope that we can come together and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
One moment. Okay, Monique.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you so much to all the speakers. I took some notes, few notes. Some of you all have expressed some things to me before tonight. I would like to say thank you to the community, the township, wherever you came from, to come and spend some time here this evening. It, it does me well to see persons being interested again in what's going on with the city. Just to kind of piggyback literally off of, not figuratively, off of Councilman Copeland, I was just thinking the other day, and then after I thought about this and saying this, and I hope it comes off right, because sometimes, some things I might say might not just come off the tongue right. But, communication. And I think about all the different entities that the city gives grant, give funding to, and whichever way they give funding to, and then our citizens are disrespected, maybe by some of these entities. And I thought about that, I was, you know, like, I know we cannot micromanage, but it's definitely standards that could be adhered to or brought up, that, you know, when you getting, this is money from our city, from our citizens. And then I go to where you are, or I call you, and you talk to me badly. And communication is on all levels. All of us may need different entities that the city may give monies to. And it's just something to think about, even if you're sitting here, and you may be one of those persons or entities that receive money from the city, please treat us nicely. Please, please treat us nicely. That goes a long way. I can't go over the whole conversations that I had, but it made me feel kind, really bad. It made me feel bad, and to just think, you know, "We just gave y'all a couple million dollars," you know? So that's really all I had to say in regards to this, and I'm very concerned about all of the issues that the speakers came up and spoke to tonight. I think I'm gonna get my head right, too, it might take a while. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Wade.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say thank you to all the speakers that came out tonight. It's always nice to see the, the chambers pass like this. Mr. Bulls, again, thank you for organizing the second meeting. Pastor Bowen, thank you for hosting. And I, I agree, I believe it was a successful meeting as well. Mr. Hurd, um, I'm, I'm wearing, I wear several hats, so I'm gonna speak from this one, because I have to. But, um, I really think you should give some thought into public safety. Be a cop. If you don't want to be a cop, talk to other children about being cops. I like the way you present yourself, very professional, and your vibe that you give off. That gentleman that's in the back there, that's Chief Ruth. If you ever have an interest, I have to point you in that direction, because I'm wearing this hat, but... But, seriously, though, I would really like, like it if you gave it some consideration. And if it's not law enforcement, maybe firefighting, maybe something in public safety. I think it's important for our youth to get involved and to learn, especially at an early age, and I'm figuring you're in your twenties? Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, you should definitely consider that. But, um, no, I appreciate you coming out and sharing, and I would love to meet with you and talk more about my idea, about you being a cop. But, uh, thank you, thank you. And, uh, again, thank you for everyone that did come out. One last thing, has, and this is rhetorical, but everyone is coming forward with ideas about our youth and parks and red. Have you thought about getting together under one umbrella, you know, for that purpose? I think that would serve the city so much better than us having 25 different entities wanting, you know, to get funding or whatnot. But think about that, collaborating, because we're always talking about collaboration. It would be great if citizens did the same thing, and we get that going. So, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Next, we have Councilwoman, look at me, bitch.
Thank you. You ready, Dan? Okay. Um, I too want to thank everyone for being here. It is, you know, we always say that it's nice to see a packed room, but it really is, because without you guys participating, things don't go well. We need the public's input, and we need people to come to our meetings and to make their voices, give us direction, because, um, you know, what Mr. Bull said is that, uh, much of our job is constituent work and being responsive to the needs of the community and addressing specific problems, whether it's a pothole, or a tree, or a zoning issue. But we appreciate hearing from you guys. I don't know if Mr. Douglas laughed, but I definitely want to say thank you to him for all, there you are, thank you, thank you, to you for all of the wonderful work you're doing on behalf of our city. Ms. Malkonian, I, I feel especially spoken to you, or to, by you tonight, because I am a member of your Neighborhood Association, and I think we've talked about the need for people to get back involved and, and younger people to step up, so when people have been doing this for so long are ready to, you know, release the reins, they have competent people to take over after them. Which leads me to Mr. Hurd. Councilman Williams is right, you have a wonderful energy, and whatever you put that into, I hope, you know, certainly talk to Councilman Williams, but whatever you put that into, it's, it's exciting, because we need young people, especially young people who are focused on being mindful and calm and non-reactionary, because we live in a very reactionary world, and it's hard not to, it's hard to result, to resist that impulse. So I'm, I'm excited to learn about your organization, and I appreciate you being here. And I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sherger.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to check with the clerk. I too, it's always hard when you're almost one of second to last, third to last, because you are the last, because everyone has covered everything, but I too want to share my sentiments to the Sosa family, as they have been very instrumental and respectful, respected in this community, so my heart and my prayers go out to the family. I appreciate the sentiments of all of our public speakers, and, and please know, like some have shared, you are not being, gone unheard, and we appreciate the things, whether good or bad or ugly. So we appreciate you being here, seeing 15 people signed up for public comments is just warming, because there's times when there's nobody. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the county commissioner in the room, thank you for coming to the city and visiting with us, we appreciate you. And I know I heard some chatter, I just want to remind everyone that the Urban Tennis Foundation is a miracle in this city. May 14th is the Free Tennis Clinic, and June 10th, from 1 to 4, is the grand opening celebration. Farrington, you and Ken are just gems, and I, I know I've said, shared my sentiments, and I share it all the time, so I appreciate what you're doing, and we are so honored to support the Garber Tennis Courts and the Urban Tennis Foundation. With that being said, I am done.
Thank you. Next, we have, we have Mayor Pro Tem. Boss.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening. I'd like to thank the citizens for coming to the City Council meeting this evening, expressing your concerns. My concerns are the same as yours. The city of Saginaw needs jobs, we need to stop all this crime, and we need to be engaged with our youth. My heart is extremely heavy. Every week, we have shootings, and everybody know what happens in the city of Saginaw is to get warmer outside, we have more shootings. I, I am a, a child that was raised up in the community center, the Civitan Community Center, from there to the First Ward Community Center, I spent a lot of time. I got in a little trouble, maybe with some of my peers, and we had mentors there at those community centers that straightened us out and got us on the straight and narrow. I ain't say that I stayed on the straight and narrow my whole life, but whenever I got in a little trouble, I can always hear those voices from those people in those community centers telling me to do this and do that. Pastor Merle was a member that I hung out with down there, Sheldon Matthews, he came by the center every now and then, and, you know, we learned how to deal with things. But right now, we don't have community centers that's open in our community. And what that leads to is a bunch of death in our community. It seem like when the community centers die, our kids die more. And I'm sick and tired of this. You know, just because the community centers die, that didn't make me want to stop doing what I was doing, so I became a mentor myself. I've been in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for over 30-something years, I'm on the board of directors of Saginaw Bay, Millin', Isabella County, Big Brothers and Sisters program, and I do this because I know where our youth lie at, and I know where their lives lie at, where they don't have anybody that's mentoring. I had seven little brothers, only one of those little brothers got in some trouble since I've been with him. The police gave him a wedgie, sent him home, he's been a productive member of society ever since. Haven't got any trouble since then. But what I'm trying to say is that if we engage these kids, they will change. Association brings about assimilation. I don't care if you hanging out with a duck, sooner or later, you gonna be quacking. It's just that thing is simple. I don't care where you at, if some kids hang out on a certain side of town, they end up talking like people on a certain side of town. And I don't care which kid go to each side of town, they gonna be, association gonna bring about some type of assimilation. So why shouldn't we get these kids to assimilate them into our lifestyles? To be around a, a, a couple, to learn how to do some things where they no knock-down, drag-out, fight all the time, when people have to be having alcohol and drugs to soothe all their problems? So it's, I engage everybody in here, getting involved with these kids' life. I helped raise two sons, a lot of grandkids, and I had seven little brothers so far in my 30-some years career with the Big Brothers and Sisters program. Neither one of them guys got in any trouble. So it's up, if we gonna do God's work, we gotta get out there and engage these kids. We got a guy flying in here-
Motion to second the Mayor Pro Tem's time for one minute and 30 seconds.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We, we got a guy flying here from California with a STEM program, Dante Davis, and he's engaging so many youths every Saturday, it's unbelievable. I get the opportunity to come and help, to help out sometime, and it's a beautiful thing to see these kids engaged in these type of things. I asked Dante, would he join the Big Brothers and Sisters program? He said, "Yes, I will." And he joined the Big Brothers and Sisters program, he lives in California, he gonna be engaged in our youth, not only the ones that he is engaged, but he's gonna even get into a one-on-one program. So why can't we do the same thing here? Everybody in here could do that. And how much, how many more lives could we save if we engage these kids? You know, it seems like, you know, everybody want to jump on the issue as it happened, but sometimes we got to be proactive. You know, we ain't got to know the results before they even happen. We know that if we get involved in the kids' life, more than likely, you're not gonna get in trouble, and that that multiplies if we do it more and more and more and more. You know, so I'm just saying, man, if, if a guy all the way from California can come here, engineer, they got a good job, and come all the way to Saginaw and, and mentor our youth, why can't the people here in Saginaw do that? I mean, why we can't get together and do things like that? Everybody come here and talk about what they want to do with the ARPA money, the first thing we need to do, we need to find something to do with our kids, because they already calling this SAG nasty and stuff like that, and I hate that. Everybody think this is the murder capital of the world. You know, it's a damn shame, little Saginaw there is and all these murders we have, and we have adults that ain't doing nothing to engage these kids, and you know damn well they don't have no fathers in them. So I pray everybody in here to get involved in the kids' life if you want Saginaw to be a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bull.
I guess they say the best is last, but I'm not gonna say that tonight. I'm not listening. I can't say anymore than what my fellow colleagues have said. First of all, I'd like to thank all of my public speakers, every last one of you. What you say, you may think we don't listen, truly, I listen. It may not be the result that you want from me, but I do what I'm, what I'm, what I'm assigned to do. I heard it said that, that, okay, I understand, you guys voted me in, but you also voted me in to work for the community, not for a special group, and I can't do it. I, I've got to work for the whole city. I can't speak for nobody else. It's a new season, it's- else. It's a new season. It's a new day. And I'm standing on the word on that one. Saginaw is moving. It may not be moving the way that you guys see. I got people coming in here every day telling me, God, I see a change. I see a change. It's a change in the atmosphere. One of the things that I really wished everybody would do is, when you point fingers at people, look at how many point back at you. Four. You point at me and you got four pointing back at you. Now, Mr. Heard, you know what? You right on time. May the fourteenth, bro, we cleaning up the city.
That's right.
For all of you to talk about the dirty city, the second Saturday in May at eight o'clock, we gonna be right here. Right here. Bring your hard shoes, because we cleaning up our city. Can the city do it by itself? No. No. I need you. I need you all to help me make this a better place. We can only be better when we work together. Collaboration. How long I've been saying that to you? Now, all of a sudden, even my team up here done caught on collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. We're not gonna get anywhere, y'all fighting one another. Stop pointing fingers. Community centers? Yeah, I want to see them. But I want to see one that's gonna stay. I don't want a fast, quick, low down. We need something that's going to stay. I know some of you probably say, she crazy. I've been crazy all my life. And I'm taking back my city and I wish you would come and help me. We can only take it back when we stop complaining. Don't complain. Paper on the ground, pick it up. Pick it up. Your neighborhood got some paper in it, I walk my neighborhood and pick up paper. We talk about our children.
Uh, motion takes and the mayor's time.
Second. For how long?
A minute and a half.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So, I, listen, if you don't know me by now, everybody in this room that really knows me should know I love my city. I ain't gonna do nothing to hurt it. I could go away right now and get a job in politics somewhere else. Why would I go away? Charity starts at home and spreads abroad. I ain't going nowhere. So for all of you naysayers who don't think that we're growing, take a look around. This season, we in our season. Walk with me. If you walk with me, you gonna see the newness of this city. But if you keep complaining, what can you see when you don't want to put nothing into this? You asked us to do our best. Our best ain't good enough. We fight amongst each other, but we hug and kiss and get it on back on. So why can't we do this in the audience? You mad at me because your paper didn't get picked up? I'm sorry. Pick it up. You mad at me because the kids is hollering and screaming? Why don't you say, I got some candy. Would you like some candy? And make it candy, no dope. Make it something that you get the kids. Only what you do for Christ will last. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next order of business is remarks from the city manager.
We got time. We gonna just wait a few minutes, because some people, I know this has been a long portion tonight. Some people may want to get up and leave and so I don't want to be rude. I said get up and leave. He sitting up there talking. Y'all see him? Did you? Did you?
Nothing. Nothing.
No, you're fine. You're fine. You're fine.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, we have a few presentations, so I, I just have a few comments and I'm gonna come back to some other items. But I'm gonna move from the back of the room first and, um, Mr. Douglas, Farrington and Ken, I have to say, every time I see them, they're both smiling. So I have to thank them for all the work that they've done with that tennis foundation. And I know he gave a lot of credit to the city, but that's all them. We're helping where we can, but that was their idea. They brought it to the city. They moved it forward. They raised the money. They're volunteering, so I, I thank you all for that and it's positive. And, uh, we appreciate that. And I move up to Debbie, because she challenged people to join the neighborhood associations and that, that is important to the city. And we have a lot of people that, that do sign up, but sometimes when we go to those neighborhood associations, we have more city staff at the meetings than there are people from the neighborhood there. And we have fire crew go, we have police go, we have scenic go, we have admin people go, and sometimes there might be only one or two people from the neighborhood. So I think that's a great challenge for Debbie, um, to, to everyone to do it. And then I move up front to the front row, Mr. Heard. You're the man of the hour. You should study public administration. We need some information on that.
Got three raises already.
We, we need to recruit for that, too. But, um, but, but seriously, there, I, I, I hear what you say and I understand that sometimes, um, you have a lot of people that do want to get involved, but maybe they feel like there's barriers or it's not as welcoming. Send them to my office. If you, you come to any group with the city manager and you're gonna be welcomed. So, um, we ask you to do that and anyone from your group who wants to do that, um, send them, send them in. Appreciate you as well. So, um, the first presentation we have is, um, Mr. Brown is the executive director of Region Seven, Area Aging, Area Agency on Aging. So we wanted to give him a few minutes to provide an update, uh, to counsel on some of the services that they provide.
Do I have a timer?
No. No. No, Mr. Brown, you don't have a time.
So first to, uh, I'm gonna address this honorable body, Mayor, Mayor Pro Town, city manager, council folks. The VIPs behind me. And to Mr. Heard, there's a song about, "Don't tell me what you think I should be." I think it's, "I believe." But do check out nonprofits if you have. And I say that because I heard about public administration. I've been in public life for a long time. I've also been in corporate America for a long time. I'm the executive director. I have that honor. It's the greatest honor in the world that I've held and the best job of Region Seven, Area Agency on Aging. A lot of folks ask us, what is an area agency on aging? I, I'd love to tell them, we're the ones that bring the service to the community and we don't charge you like the other triple A downstate. Um, and with that, um, I'd like, I have to do a shout out to, uh, Ms. Bench and Ms. Moore for having served on my honorable board of directors and guiding me. And, um, with that, uh, we do many services, but our most important one is taking care of nine hundred seniors every day across ten counties in their homes, where they want to live instead of being institutionalized. We know about living in the community. That's our expertise. Um, we also work with the communities and the community's organizations. We bring money. We bring economic, we bring expertise, we bring oversight. But, so how many of you have heard of Meals on Wheels? We don't make the meals. We find the resources for your local council on aging to make those meals. We subsidize that program. We do the proper oversight. Um, and I might add that if you allowed the state or yourselves to do it, you would have to give up something. And if you do the state and let them do the oversight, it's fifteen percent for them to do the oversight at the end of the deal. We do it for five percent. Ninety-five percent of all the pass through money gets to your citizens and services. In home, we also give the caregivers breaks. Also, I wanted to talk, because I've heard a lot about children, a lot about children. But there's another epidemic and it's socialization, social isolation of our senior community. They're living at home alone and very, very, um, sadly, this last two years, even more so. Almost to the point of abandonment in those feelings. So as you reach out into that community of children, I tell you to go and reach out into a senior's life. Go to your local council on aging. Great idea here. I heard it from the national folks, is deliver for lunch. Go to lunch with a senior. Go down and talk to Jessica Sargent, see how you could pick up a lunch at lunchtime and deliver it to a senior and talk to him for five minutes. They'll remember you. Trust me, they will remember you. Anyways, um, what do we bring to Saginaw and Saginaw City? I'll get to my report to my governing bodies. Saginaw, the city of Saginaw is part of my governing body. You appoint a person along with ten counties. You're the only city that gets an appointment. You, uh, don't do the local match and that's fine. I'm gonna explain about the local match from Saginaw County and how much money. But I'm here to tell you that probably fifty percent of this report on a countywide basis is concentrated right here in the city of Saginaw. And that, so, but we do a lot of out of the box things. So during the pandemic, tens of thousands of food boxes, we did the distribution. People were coming to Bay County and distributing these food boxes during the pandemic across. Uh, how many of you recall the flood? It's a flash in the memory, right? We weren't a first responder, but that, that night, we were right out there with the first responders, supporting them, support you. When one of your first responders ran out of food, we had the food truck deliver them food to their place so they could work with your folks, your citizens. Um, when wells ran dry, we got water. Um, in fact, we built a couple of wells, because we couldn't have people without quality water. Um, we just don't say no at Region Seven. We say yes. Many of my, uh, talk about economic engines and taxes. Taxes is not a dirty word. Contrary to popular belief, taxes bring you a lot of wonderful things. It brings you the streets, it brings you the water, it brings you your teachers. I could go on and on. I, I've given that speech. Um, anyways, um, I heard about the housing project. So I'm gonna be off a little bit on my speech here, but I'd like to bring it to the local, because local is very important. So I'm so happy to see an assisted living facility with forty-five beds. I just dealt with a crisis two weeks ago where, uh, um, a facility closed down, fifty-five beds. Thirty of them were my clients that I had to find new homes for. Over that weekend, we had to support them, shelter them. We put them up in hotels, whatever we had to do. Person, I, if, if I was gonna talk about management, they were just too kind. And that, so you can't let a boiler go. You know, you gotta charge something, you gotta find money somewhere. But it closed. And we worked with that. But the challenge is not just assisted living. We need assisted living, we need independent living, but more importantly, in communities like Bay, um, Saginaw and those kind of communities, uh, if you go downstate, it's not in my planning service area, it's not one, but Flint, the shortage we're seeing, the scarcity we're seeing is what's called affordable assisted living. And those are things that Region Seven can partner with the city of Saginaw and the city of, and the county of Saginaw. Um, we like to cooperate. We might not be able to do bricks and mortars that way, but we can come in and give it the sustainability. We can give it the expertise to keep going and the funding. Uh, we're working on a project. I put that in your packet with Bay County. It may or may not come to fruition. We keep trying. That's these two color sheets. We're not into the big facilities, but more into the little facilities. And I will just tell you, we built a pay center and a residence hall just recently. We're building a campus and working with several people collaborating down in, uh, St. Clair and Fort Grasset. And I'd invite you to come and see what's in Fort Grasset, because if you do your planning, you do your things right, that could be right here in the city of Saginaw. Um, and I'll leave that with you. I'm here for discussions in regards to that. I have reached out about possibilities. I hope it happens. I'm also supposed to, uh, publicly talk about my fiscal responsibilities. So we all know about audits. My agency gets a, what's called a single audit from the federal government, because I take federal money and I pass ninety-five percent of that on to the citizens. Um, unlike, and I want to say this, because somebody wants our money, our community-based money, it's called insurance companies. And I, yet, I have yet to see an insurance company run for five percent. I'm a lot more efficient than them. Um, and I'm not worried. I'm already retired once. I was asked to come and run Region Seven, um, by my predecessor and their board. I retired up in Gladwin County and, um, you know, it's a lot of hard work, but I'm having a blast in retirement. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you. I'm glad you hired me to do it the right way. Um, anyways, if you look at this sheet, the county donates twelve thousand dollars. We leverage that for Older Americans Act, nineteen fifteen C money, and I could go on to the list of the numbers and that. Um, but we return over six million dollars to the county. I would probably bet you two to three million of that comes here. Um, the other part is, we also are a Medicaid agency. And unlike insurance companies, we reinvest our Medicaid excess dollars back into Medicaid eligible folks. And oh, just those poor folks that dropped through the cracks that don't qualify for any program. We reach out, we bring clinics, vaccinations. We've done it all in the last two or three years, especially during this pandemic. Um, we thank all the people that came and got the food box and dispersed it because without the volunteers, we would never have, never done those good things. But what a return on investment. Uh, again, back to my audits. Since I've been there, no findings.
No findings.
No findings.
No findings.
Unqualified opinions. And what we're most, we're most proud of, and two of you have heard me say this forever, is no management letter. And people that have looked at audits know what that means. So we try and do it right. Look forward to partnerships, uh, even more strong collaborations. Um, whatever you want us to do, we'll do. Uh, we serve the older Americans, we serve, uh, disability and we serve veterans. And I think we do it very well. And I'm best at Q and A, ain't I?
Yes, you are right.
Oh, ain't. My mom was just slapping.
Any questions?
Don't have a question, but a comment. And I want to say, my family, we've been working, uh, we have a proposal with the county on aging, because we found a lot of our seniors at our church did not have anyone teaching them technology. And so we thought about finding iPads or tablets to help them be connected to their family. And so right now, we have something before you all, but you all were one of the only ones that we could find that would be willing to possibly assist us in supporting the seniors of our church. So.
We, we, working with yours, with the county's council on aging, or that overbody, uh, we've passed out hundreds of iPads, but more importantly, the connection. So that might not be just wiring them in, um, because whether you're in the city or out in the urban areas, there are areas that just won't get a connection. So in those cases, we've even brought in what they call those satellite hotspots. Not the hotspot, the you, but the real hotspot. So.
What, what age do you start, commission age, you start working with people at what age?
Okay, again, you have a council on aging, that's your county branch. We're the regional. We're under the Older Americans Act. We report right to the state unit on aging. So we're an area agency on aging. And I'm, again, going back to your question.
What age is it, the people that you serve?
So eighteen and above for some of our programs, anybody aging. And then another class of our, uh, programs are sixty and older. And most of that, our programs are in here and we work locally with the council on agings. And if the city had And if the city had a senior department and/or I don't know that you have a senior millage to fund those kind of things. That's allowed under the Michigan Public Acts. But we would work with them. We subsidize those programs to make them work because.
Thank you.
I'm looking and everybody just.
I think we put our hands up at the same time.
Did you want to say something? Okay.
Just a comment. It's great to see you, Mr. Brown. And I just, for the public, the work that Region 7 does is so important. My time on the board was probably some of the most rewarding work that I was able to do as a council member because you're dealing with one of our, you know, one of our most vulnerable populations. And it is so important for the city of Saginaw because we have that extra seat because we have such a significantly large population of people who are aging and need their services. So when he talks about people wanting their money, it's true. I mean, everybody's always after other people's money, but.
And we want to give it.
They never want to give it. No.
No, no, we want to give it.
Oh, they want to give it. They never want to take it. And, but to say that the work that they're doing and them being not privatized and not having a profit margin to make up for is so important. And if you have a grandparent in the community, you know, make sure that you look into their services and make sure, you know, anybody elderly in your neighborhood, there's a good possibility there's something out there that might help them. So thank you is all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Do you know how many people in the city of Saginaw you service currently?
We could get that for you. We report by county. But we could probably do as close as zip codes. And some of them go in and out. But we did it once before and we can do it again as close as possible.
When was the last report? When you did it before?
We do a report every year based on county. For the county governments. So, you know, you get out into Santa lac and some of those counties. There's not a city like Saginaw, but we'd be more than willing.
Yeah, I'm really interested in seeing how many people.
Absolutely.
Within the city, absolutely.
The last time it was close, it was like 40? You had me. I think it was 40% back then, but we'll check. It changes. Of the county report.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
I can tell you.
But I'm getting older and that's five years ago, so. But we do one annually for every county.
I can tell you, I sit on the board. I also represent the aging in Lansing. So I'm their voice in Lansing as well. So you know, if I'm in something, I got to believe in it. One of the things that I'd like for everybody to know is those food boxes you talked about. I know y'all heard me all the time saying, I can't do this. I got to go do food boxes. I was one of the fortunate ones who didn't care about the gas and still don't care. I would have got 50 boxes on between Monday and Tuesday and delivered two, about two to three boxes to seniors. That was my charge. That's my give back. Not only did I deliver them, when they kept saying, Brenda, we ain't got no more. I went and found places to get boxes just to talk to the seniors. So when he tells you that we need to do that, we talk about the young people. What about our historians, our seniors? We do need to go take care of them. I'm a senior. I want y'all come see about me. If I get old and can't, Bob, don't be shaking your head.
I'm Medicare eligible. You're not shaking my head for a reason.
I got my red, white and blue card and I'm proud of that card. So I'm just saying, the work that they do councilwoman benches so right, you just don't know. A lot of behind the scenes stuff, people going to hospital. You know, there's stuff that's going on. That's why I say we on the move. Stuff that you don't think is happening is happening. Family members are falling apart. I hear my council, my fellow council people talk about it. Here's a way you can help. With the vaccinations, they were up here. Called them and they come right on and gave seniors, went to their homes and gave them shots. So Bob, I thank you. You know, I, once, twice a month, we meet. Twice a month, I tell them what I want for Saginaw. Hear me, y'all. Saginaw City. I'm forever telling him, no, we ain't got no money, but we need some money in the city of Saginaw. What you gonna do for us? So Bob, I thank you. I really do. Do we have any more questions?
We're going to feed your hungry and we're going to shelter your poor.
Any more questions? Thank you so much, sir.
If I may, because you know I don't have a big advocacy budget. Is there anybody from the press? Transparency, right?
Thank you.
And I thank you. And with your permission, I would like to leave and.
I know. Have a safe drive home.
I've had a long trip. I haven't been home in 10 days, so.
I know.
And thank you, Mr. Brown. And then we have a second presentation. It's several council members requested. So we have our planner, Bob Golin. And he has prepared the presentation for you about this rezoning proposal that went to the Planning Commission. And I will turn it over to Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Ploton Townman, city council members. City staff is proposing a rezoning of an area located along North Washington bounded by Farwell, Roosevelt Austin and North 10th Street to M1 Light Industrial. And I'd like to provide you with some facts about the rezoning and the rationale behind it. The current area to be rezoned is surrounded by industrially zoned property to the north and the west. That's the pink colors as well as the yellow colors. Likewise, this area is bounded by I-675 to the south, intersected by the CSX Transportation Rail Switchyard and Veterans Memorial Parkway Industrial Corridor to the west. Six streets also identified as a truck route through the city. The current zoning within the area proposed to be rezoned is a mix ranging from R2 two-family residential, R01 restricted office and B1 general business. The area to the north and northwest of the property is zone M2 is the general industrial classification and consists of Rifkin Scrapiron and Metal, Redmond Truck and Auto and General Motors Metal Casting Plants. The area to the east is zoned for two-family and low-density multifamily residential. The area to the south is an extension of that mixed use or mix of zoning. The uses include primarily single-family homes, churches and vacant properties. The area is proposed to be rezoned is approximately 32 and a half acres. There's a total of 133 parcels. 69 or 52% are owned by Saginaw County Land Bank or in foreclosure with the county treasurer. Two are owned by the Saginaw Housing Commission. There are 12 homes within the area. Eight of those are owner occupied and four are rentals. Six existing businesses along primarily North Washington. There are three churches as well as the June Teeth Creative Cultural Center. And the remaining parcels are privately held vacant property. The location in terms of, oops, sorry. The location in terms of its proximity to I-675 and I-75 make it an attractive area to market to industrial types of uses. Due to the nature of the surrounding sites, it's more conducive to light industrial development to access a buffer between the heavier industrial properties on the north and the west and the adjoining uses to the south. The rationale behind this is to begin the process of assembling property to establish a light industrial zone to attract suppliers, assembly and fabrication type businesses as a way to create jobs and tax base. A developer is typically looking for a shovel-ready site that they don't have to try and assemble and clear. If you look at the type of development occurring in BV Township along M-81 and I-75, it was felt that we could take advantage of that kind of activity. And furthermore, this area is a major gateway into the city and would be more invited if the area were cleaned up and developed. So the legal basis for the use of zoning to regulate permitted uses within a community is derived from the city's master plan as authorized under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So the 2011 Future Land Use Map for the city of Saginaw, master plan, originally identified this area as a green reserve opportunity area. There are several other areas within the city identified with this classification, not just the northeast area. You got the Holland Remington Corridor from the city limits west to Sheridan, South Michigan, South Washington Farwell Corridor, and then the area north of Davenport and west of Hill. The key description of the green reserve opportunity area is the green reserve opportunity area was envisioned to be converted to an attractive low-maintenance natural area. Over time, the city would demolish and remove existing vacant residential structures. The green reserve opportunity areas in the short term included very few to no residential development. The long-term view was that it would become an open green space and used for passive outdoor recreational uses. This was a new land use category that didn't correspond to any district that we have within the city's zoning ordinance at the time. There are a few other types of categories similar to that that are not associated with any particular zone within the zoning ordinance. These types of land use categories were provided kind of an overall concept so that of the type of use within the area, further study would be maybe necessary to look at if there's some subzones that would be suitable for the existing zoning or that new ones need to be created. So going back to 1980, the area once had a population of around 3,100. The current population in 2020 is estimated at 688. So that translates to decline of 78% of the population over a 40-year period. Historically speaking, in 2009, the city of Saginaw designated a 346-acre portion of its northeast section as the Green Zone. A sub-area of Census Track Number 1. This was done in joint application with the Saginaw County Land Bank Authority to a federal program pertaining to the Neighborhood Stabilization. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program or the NSP Program grant was awarded to the city of Saginaw. The Saginaw County Land Bank Authority covered many aspects. For this particular area, the Green Zone portion of the grant was directed towards blight removal through demolition with vacant properties then placed in the Saginaw County Land Bank for future redevelopment considerations. That program is no longer in existence. The grant funds have been used. So the master plan, the action plan within the 2011 master plan encouraged the assembly of vacant properties for economic development purposes. This is the current zoning for that area. Even though the master plan proposed the area to be designated as Green Reserve Opportunity Area, there was no new zones created for the area. So this is the zone for this area as it stands today. The current zoning is a mixed range from R2 two-family residential, R01 restricted office and B2 general business. The gold color represents the R2 zones. Principal use of land is for single-family dwellings or two-family dwellings. And then that light gray area indicates the R01 restricted office. So these are the types of permitted uses within the R01 zone. Restricted office district is intended for multiple-family residential uses and those restricted office and restricted business uses which will provide opportunities for local employment close to residential areas, thus reducing travel to and from work and which would provide clean, modern office buildings in landscape setting. The area shaded in the red is the B2 general business. These are the permitted uses within that zone. The permitted uses are intended to provide businesses and services usually found in major business areas along major streets, regional thoroughfares or near freeway access ramps. So the characteristics of the uses of this zone generate large volumes of vehicular traffic and require substantial access for off-street parking and loading. So typically, this type of a zone would be almost more intense than a light industrial use. Here's the proposed 2022 Future Land Use Map. We have been in the process of updating the master plan for the past year and a half. And the vision to rezone the proposed corridor along North Washington is not a new one. The Future Land Use Map was first discussed during a stakeholder meeting interview in September of last year. It was formally unveiled during a joint boards and commissions meeting in October of 2021. The Planning Commission at their last meeting in March was again provided the proposed Future Land Use Map and the proposed goals and strategies. So again, the rationale is that the location of the proposed area in terms of its proximity to I-675 and I-75 make it an attractive area for light industrial development. So this rezoning request is staff-initiated. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act includes a requirement to hold a public hearing and to gather input from local residents on the issues. Notices of the public hearing were sent out to property owners and residents within 300 feet of the property. The Planning Commission is to consider the request and make its recommendation to approve, approve with stipulations or deny and forward these to the city council for consideration. This map identifies the parcels that were sent notices. The meeting was held February 22nd during the public hearing to consider the request to rezone the area. Two individuals from the neighborhood attended. Neither objected to the proposed rezoning. The motion to recommend the rezoning passed by a six to one vote by the Planning Commission and forwarded to you. So if the zoning were to be changed to M Light Industrial, these are the types of uses that would be permitted. By definition, the M1 Light Industrial zoning district is intended to permit certain industries which are light manufacturing, warehousing and wholesaling character. And because of their relatively low intensity of industrial activity, the uses can be integrated with nearby areas such as commercial and residential uses. You have some examples of those types of businesses between the Vets Park and Leon Scott area. Further, such uses are limited to the decree of, sorry, degree of noise, smoke, layer, waste and other features of industrial operations that are, that generate onsite so as to avoid adverse effects with nearby areas. So because these parcels would represent new construction, a site plan would have to be submitted to the Planning Commission and approved. The Planning Commission is required to review the plans, make sure the development complies with certain zoning standards. And those zoning standards are that all manufacturing activities shall be converted, or I'm sorry, conducted within an enclosed building. External storage should be visually screened from streets and adjoining commercial and residential properties. And whatever, whenever such parking facilities adjoins residential property and or residential street or alley, a wall, fence or a planning of such height, character and design as will meet the approval of the city planning commission shall be erected and maintained. So the rezoning would definitely impact the current uses of some of the properties within the area. If the rezoning is adopted, those residential uses and churches would be deemed prior non-conforming uses and would be allowed to continue for so long as the property owners continue to use the property for such current uses. In these instances, the zoning ordinance addresses this. In Section 153.102, the current uses are allowed to be continued. If the property owner wishes to expand the building or build, they must appeal to the Board of Appeals on Zoning for a variance. Ordinary repairs, though, can be done without a variance so long as the cost does not exceed 15% of the current replacement cost. Likewise, any reconstruction of damaged structures is permitted up to 25% of the. Likewise, any reconstruction of damaged structures is permitted up to 25% of the current replacement cost. This would apply to the 12 residents and the existing churches within the area. Most of the existing businesses along North Washington are permitted use by special use within that M-zone. So I hope this helps you with your decision. The Planning Commission, based on staff's requests, is respectfully recommending that the city council approve the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
Are variants free?
Sorry?
To apply for the variants, those are free.
To apply for Board of Appeals on Zoning, a variance is $450 application, and that covers the cost of the public hearing that's required as part of that.
We only have 12 residents that stay in that area.
Can I get y'all put your hands up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, please acknowledge me.
Can I get y'all put your hands up? Come on now. Come on. I'm letting y'all get away.
Come on now. I apologize, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman Williams.
Thank you. We only have 12 residents that reside in that area?
Yes, 12, and then eight of them are owner-occupied, and four of them are renters.
Yes, Councilman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. So are you saying that if this was to be light industrial, and an existing church or resident that needed particular repairs to their property, are you saying if they cannot afford to repair that, then that goes back to the city? Can you explain that a little more? Maybe I missed it, because it seems like that's what you said, but maybe you didn't. Okay, can you elaborate on that part when you said something about if they have to utilize it for what it's being used for now, and if it needs repair, X amount of percentage? Can you kind of elaborate on that?
Sure. So if there's general maintenance kinds of things, they need a new roof or something like that, they can do that without, it would not require a waiver from the zoning board of appeals. Up to 15% of the, of the...
You got a problem?
Yeah, it's, yeah, but it's, it's important to point out what that is. It's the current replacement cost value, so that would be significantly more given the cost of construction and everything else. And then if there was damage done, like through a storm or something like that, the structure, they would be permitted to fix that as well without requesting a variance from the, up to a 25% of the recurrent replacement cost.
So just if I could, for further clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Golin, but the need for the variance really arises for significant expansions or remodeling of the existing use?
Yes.
Okay, so my...
Yes.
Pay the per.
I knew.
Oh, I'm not done. So my next question is, kind of like, sort of to get an explanation, Councilman Williams said there's 12 homes occupied, so are there homes there that could be occupied, and are there homes that may not be in the immediate area but near this area, very near this area that could be affected by the zone change?
The homes that are not within the zone that we're proposing are not affected by that. The homes that are in the area that we're proposing to rezon, my understanding is all of those homes are occupied with the exception of the ones that are owned currently by the land bank that are boarded up and ready to be demolished.
Okay, no, I don't, maybe I didn't make that right. Maybe it didn't come across right, or maybe I didn't say it right. It's 12 homes occupied. If this was light industrial, are there homes near, not right there, but near, that could possibly be affected by the rezoning? Like, I know First Ward, if I'm not mistaken, First Ward Center is in this area, and I know there are several homes in that area. So I'm saying if First Ward is affected by that, how not would the homes that's near First Ward not be affected?
When you say...
It's a lot of, I've seen a lot of occupied homes in the area, so...
I guess I need to clarify what you mean by affected.
By affected with the rezoning. Like, if you were to put up a warehouse, let's just say, and the noises and the trucks going and coming, even though I'm in the immediate area, what about the homes that are near this, would they be affected?
Well, again, the Planning Commission has, any new construction, they would have barriers put up or screening and that sort of thing to screen for most of that. The zoning currently there, the B2 general business, in my opinion, would generate as much, if not more, noise than what a light industrial operation would have. So the current zoning right now, anybody can go in and develop that with those permitted uses.
Okay. Now, possibly, my last question. The residents in that area now, it seemed like I read, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I know I read it, that you could not have residential in the same area with M1. So would those persons have to move? What is keeping them there, and what is keeping them from being...
Yeah, so they become a legal non-conforming use, but they can continue to stay there. Nobody's going to kick them out. And I don't, you know, we don't know how long it's going to take to develop that area. I'm just proposing an alternative to what's there now.
Okay. All righty.
Let me go this way.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
We have some questions.
I did.
Councilman Flores.
Yeah, I had a few.
Okay. Can I get y'all to do two at a time so I can go back, because it seemed like it's a lot of questions?
Two questions at a time?
Yes, sir. Two questions at a time, Councilman Flores.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the purpose of this redesignation is to attract light industrial businesses? Have we had any offers previously that had to be turned down because it was zoned differently?
No, but I've had a recent inquiry.
A recent inquiry, and that was after the September, October original genesis of this?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question, when I had gone to one of the community meetings, one individual had asked or proposed a hypothetical of if somebody is a residential owner there, and they were, if this passed, say, we live in a world where this has passed, would they not be able to sell their home, but they would have to sell their property, to another prospective or proposed homeowner?
I see what you're saying. Yeah, no, you can change ownership in a non-conforming use.
So they'd still be able to sell their home?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and they'd still be able to...
It would continue to be non-conforming, however.
But they'd be able to pass it along, even if it's intergenerational?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my two, and I'll come back.
He already answered mine.
He answered yours?
He asked my question.
Okay.
First, I have to apologize because I didn't thank you for your presentation. So one, thank you, Mr. Golin, for your presentation. The other question that I had, well, two, and I'm done, for sure, I mean it, I'm done this time. When it comes, when it comes down to the Green Zone, one of the questions that I had for those who live there and maybe want the green, whatever is listed, if they could purchase that property, well, let's say we do designate it M1, and it is one of the 12 homes, or a church, or whatever's in that area, if they wanted to turn it into something else, we would, they would still pay that 450 for the variance application for the zoning board?
If they wanted to turn it into a different use?
Yes.
So once they did that, then it would trigger the fact that they would need to, it would need to fall within the permitted uses that that zone has.
Gotcha, so they would have to go through the variance process?
Yeah, the zoning board of appeals cannot grant variances on uses like that.
So he goes to the planning, but there's still that, my biggest thing is there's still that $450 cost? Or no?
Can't change it.
So yes, there is a $450 fee to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance on certain types of...
Councilman Copeland, can you... Can I clarify? So I am a, this is now M1. I have the variance, I'm non-conforming, okay? But there is property that's available next to me.
Okay.
Is, we've passed it, it is now M1. Whether it be me wanting to purchase the home to build another home for my family, or it may be a church in the area wanting to build a home for one of their parishioners, we would then, because it's M1, we would have to go through that process of paying the fee.
No.
No!
Because it's not a permitted use. You cannot, if you change the zoning, you would not be permitted to put another residence in that area.
I appreciate you, Mr. Golin, for answering that. You're the person, I appreciate you for answering that. Any other outside, I'm not, I don't need that. But then my final question is, for this particular situation, what you've prepared for us today, when the community, we heard from them, maybe, is there a reason why this wasn't shared with them? I don't know, we've heard about September and October, those were in the conversations. I knew it was COVID. From sending in those meetings, it was just the community, just, you felt the pain, I'll put it that way. Sending in the conversation, I just felt the pain, and I don't like feeling that, because I don't want my, I don't want people, whether they on the east side, north side, this is Saginaw, I don't want them feeling that way.
So we've been working on updating the master plan for a year and a half, as I mentioned. I've gone to the neighborhood association meetings, we've surveyed members of the community. I did attempt twice to have a meeting with the northeast neighborhood, and just for scheduling and other issues, they never happened, so I did attempt to do that, yes.
Thank you for that.
I would add that Mr. Golin and the planning staff provides this type of information at the Planning Commission meeting, so treating each of these the same way, similarly, you have, as Ms. Zimmerman mentioned, under the Oprah, we have, in North Carolina, something that's been a school since the '30s, is being rezoned this evening. Similarly, that, there hasn't been a presentation like this other than at the Planning Commission or from the Oprah request that Ms. Zimmerman and that property developer. So all of these are the same way. Just wanted to point that out.
And I understand, I received plenty of emails stating that, so that is clear for me. Make sure of that.
May I pro Tim Boss, you have a question?
Thank you for your presentation, sir. Hey, I grew up in that neighborhood some, and I noticed since, from early '60s, besides the houses by the First Ward Community Center, there hadn't been no development, no new houses in that area since. The only thing I noticed is the Potter's Church, there used to be a, I think it was the Wonder Bar, if I'm not mistaken. As a kid, I can remember riding my bike up, because the steps just rolled straight up, and you could just ride your bike right up in there as a kid, and we done that years ago, in the '60s. But anyway, there hasn't been any new development there. The houses are pretty old, and I'm thinking, you know, I feel for the residences in that city, too. Sometime when change come, people resisted, and I understand why, because they're not used to things, you know, turning over like that. Unfortunately, they got used to the place looking the way it looked. I drove through there, and it's paper all over the place, you know, and it looks terrible. So with new industrial, light industrial coming in, that would liven the place up some, with the buffers just there, I like that design. Then not only that, more than likely, if those light industrial businesses come there, that might be the only thing that can pick the value up of them homes at that particular time. And if those homes are deteriorating, those people probably get more money than they ever thought about getting for those houses, because maybe the industrial people want to buy those out so they can finish up their business. So it could be a golden goose eggs in disguise for the people that's there, because some of the property is just not that valuable, you know? And I'm not getting down on nobody because of that, but the thing is, they are extremely old, the homes building, some of them built in 1800s or late 1900s. And if we had industrial coming in, like I said, it's going to boost the values for those homes. When those people sell, they may get the money out of it they never thought they can get out those properties before, ever, so. And then when you look at the Buena Vista Corridor, I'd always looked at that, man, all the businesses down on the Buena Vista Corridor, and those jobs the city can have, that's tax-based, that we need in this city. They already got a scrapyard right across the street, you know? I wonder, did they ever, anybody complain about that when they was building out there? I mean, that's the mongest place, you know? So it's right there now, so it's beginning to come industrial. I was there back in the day when the Greyhound found you would blow dust, and it'd be all over the whole projects, brown dust all over the whole place over there, man. We was scared, we was going to die, man, it was terrible over there. You know, be all over the people's cars, the ash and everything, so the found you had cleaned it up some, but it's been an industrial area forever. So, you know, I'm glad that the people don't have to leave, don't have to leave, it's just that they may have some bigger buildings in front of them, you know, when people's not going to build anything there now, so. Thing, I appreciate your presentation, sir.
Yes, Councilwoman Bench.
Yes, I know, I think it was Councilman Copeland asked, or maybe it was Flores, either way, they asked if there was interest, if we had, if we changed the zoning. You said you had one person or one entity approach you about potential M1 zoning business. Do you have anyone looking to build new housing over there right now, like under the current zoning?
No.
No. Do you know why? I mean, the cost per square foot is fairly prohibitive right now, I believe, for like any new construction, whether it's, regardless of what side of the river it's on, is that correct?
I wouldn't want to speculate as to why.
Well, it's, my understanding, it's very cost prohibitive to build new right now. So, okay. The other question I had is, you mentioned the master plan, the forthcoming master plan, and the Green Opportunity Reserve Zone. Is there language in the upcoming master plan that does away or puts to bed finally that policy that so many of us would like to see go away?
Well, as I pointed, I showed you what we're looking to do in that area, but there are portions of the northeast area that we're making a general mixed-use type of a category that we haven't really, you know, gelled into something specific. And likewise, there are other parts of the city. We're under the gun to try and get the master plan completed, but that doesn't mean that the master plan, once it's done, is done. I mean, it can continue to evolve, and so the plan, once that's approved, then, is to go back into those areas and look at potential zoning that would fit maybe in some subzones within those areas and/or create new zones that would fit in particular areas. So that's the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For clarity, we only have one inquiry for business, no inquiries for building homes, and in the near future, near future being two to five years, do we have anything set up if this is rezoned?
You mean in the area that we're proposing to rezon?
Correct.
I just have the one inquiry, and again, it's, it isn't finalized, there's too many details that had to be worked out, including the rezoning for it to even work, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I'm going to get you, Mr. Flores, I'm sorry. What I want to know is this. Officially now, it's now a new name, right or wrong? It's no longer the Green Zone, right?
Again, the Green Zone was kind of a term used for the grant, and it's gone.
So now that it's gone, the residents in that area, I heard about deteriorating... So now that it's gone, the residents in that area, I heard about deterioration of houses. I know that me and Councilwoman Sylvia, we just did a housing repair. And there were over 150 people in the room, and there were more than 75 online. And some of those were residents who stay in that area, who could not get that money before. Could not get anything before. Isabella Bank acknowledged they were eligible to get some money from Michigan now, to fix their homes. I, I guess what I'm saying on that to say this. It, it looks like it's not going to work for us, but it is going to work for our good, because some people in that area who've been paying out of pocket don't have to pay out of pocket anymore, if they're eligible. And so, you know what? I can't speak for nobody but me, but for nine years, I've been fighting to get that lifted so that they would be able to get work done on their houses, along with buying property on the side. Now, can they, will they be able to buy adjacent lots in that area?
I think in some, um, parts of that northeast area, we would, you know, it's, it's the land bank's property, not the city's. But, um, we could potentially lift some of that as we look at doing, uh, mixed-use development. But the purpose, again, with, or the plan originally was to assemble property for redevelopment. And so I think that the area that we're looking at rezoning, really, that, that's an area that we would need to work with the land bank to try and assemble some properties to then offer to someone.
So there is a possibility that it can happen?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Chair. Are, are you able to tell us who the, uh, where the proposal came from?
Nope.
Okay.
It's, and I'm not trying to be elusive, it's just that there's too many pieces to the puzzle to try and make it work, and I don't want to make light of that individual company that's looking at doing that, I mean.
Yeah, understandably. Uh, the, the follow-up was, can we go lot by lot? When it comes to their proposal, is, or it would just be the entire strip?
Well, when you do rezoning, you don't want to do it lot by lot, because that, um, that would imply, uh, spot zoning. And spot zoning is, is, uh, somewhat implies that you're playing favoritism to some people and not allowing others to rezone.
Thank you. And I think that that's what some of the, um, our constituents are worried about, to be honest. But we do have, um, an ARPA proposal that came through, it was from Stars, it was for $4.7 million. Uh, that's right on the border of what's being proposed here. And when it comes to light industrial, um, for, I think, 153, uh, 346, that includes terminals that would be able to go in the neighborhood. So I just want to make sure it's not Stars, or is it? You can't say that regardless, but the way that it would look is if this were to, uh, be passed, it would seem more feasible for that plan to be put into action as well. I just want to make that, uh, public and make that aware.
My understanding of Stars is looking at Potter Street area, as well as the civitan.
Correct. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much, uh, for your presentation. I would motion to suspend the rules for any individuals that, uh, wanted to speak, are able to do so. Uh, public individuals.
No.
I don't think that's allowed.
Potter, excuse me. I don't think we can do that. I, I'm going to address attorney on that one, suspending in the midst of a meeting.
We are still under management update.
Oh, it has to be under...
So we are still under management update, okay.
We have, we have not gotten to that agenda item.
Okay. So do we have any more questions?
I kind of have it.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, I don't know where it goes. But a lot of, um, kind of a lot of our questions, um, the gentleman, uh, gave a presentation, and I thought our questions were regarding the presentation, and then when we got to that agenda item, that we could make, you know, certain things in inquiry, am I wrong? Because I definitely have something to say. So do I wait? I want to make sure I'm saying it at the right time.
You know what?
I don't know, I'm just want, I want to be decent and in order.
You wait till the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Because, you know what, it's hard understanding people. Blah, 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 because I mumble, and then I hear every other word, so I apologize, I do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bob, I want to thank you. Um, I, I don't know if it, if it did what it needed to do, but I want to thank you, because I will admit, the gang, the gang really has been working to try to lift that, and I'm so thankful, I'm so thankful. Thank you.
Try urban planning.
I know you. Mr. Hurd, Ms. Hurd, we might as well go and put you on our payroll, because everybody, everybody wants you.
Press City Council.
Madam.
Okay.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, uh, Bob, for the presentation, thank you, Mr. Brown, as well. So now going back to a couple of items that we had, and I received a few questions about the, uh, resolution for revenue loss. So, um, just for a couple of the questions, that calculation was completed through Guide House. So Guide House, through their contract, completed the revenue loss calculation. They also helped with the preparation of the revenue. So some had asked if Guide House had commented and reviewed that, they did. And, um, the revenue loss calculation is outlined in the, uh, legislation, specifically the final rules. So that complies with the final rules. And also, another question received is, we're not asking to spend this money tonight. We're just, um, having a resolution to reserve those revenue loss funds. We would recalculate, or we would calculate the loss annually. So we have just two years calculated, but it's anticipated that that would be the total period. But we're not asking to spend money tonight. And, um, I would add that, uh, we did talk about revenue loss in the very first ARPA committee meeting. Uh, David from Guide House talked about it, and I talked about it as well. This is one of the few items that is specifically outlined in the ARPA legislation for an allowable use of those funds. Now, um, when we do want to spend that money, we will comply with the grant, we will comply with the city rules. So if we had a project come back, it would come back to council. So you'll have, you'd have the opportunity to approve that. And I will tell you that we are already, these things lag, as I'm sure a lot of you know. We're already seeing pretty significant losses in our income tax, because people are not working in their offices in the city any longer. Um, and part of the revenue loss calculation has increases built into it. So we have been steadily increasing over the past probably 10 years in our income tax, and now we're seeing a decline. And that's, that's part of COVID. Also, uh, want to get to which specific ones, but, um, we're in budget preparation right now. We're cutting some of those, um, public infrastructure projects already, particularly streets. So you remember, our city engineer Travis gave a presentation last time, some of those projects aren't in there anymore, because Saginaw's going to be hit from multiple sides. We're going to have a COVID reduction. We're going to have, uh, because of the decrease in our census, that's going to impact, I know several of you know, that goes into our calculation for gas and waste tax revenue. That goes into a calculation for state shared revenue, and so on. And finally, I just wanted to comment, I've had other people from the ARPA committee ask that this be done, that we reserve these funds, so that they have an idea of saying, okay, well, we understand these funds might be in city uses, still can have input, maybe it's parks. I know, uh, Councilwoman Mara Sylvia and I have talked about parks. Mayor and I have talked about cemeteries. We don't have the revenue there to do those projects normally. Revenue loss implies that we can spend that money on what activities that the city normally does, which are not eligible under the other ARPA expenses. So I just wanted to, uh, to state that. And then the final item, um, that we did have come up, and I, I know some of you have asked about this previously, so I'd bring it up tonight. Council passed a motion that we do, that we take the idea of, um, hazard pay or premium pay, COVID-related, to the ARPA committee. That was done by our HR director, and Ms. Jones and Ms. Brown were there as well for that meeting. They did not vote on that. They, my understanding is that consensus on the committee was, that's a city decision. Which, in my view, that's similar to the revenue loss, but, okay. So I'm bringing that back to you all, and I just, I wanted to share some information, because we have, we did get another request from, another formal request, request from another union, so I want to bring it to you. Um, you can provide premium pay to city workers, you can choose not to, whatever you'd like. But, um, we looked at a couple of different local units, and, um, we wanted to give you some options and give you an idea about what that would cost. So we, we did put together some guidelines. In my view, uh, we need to provide it to all of our city employees, and not change it between public safety only. Uh, we had people out there working elections right in the heart of COVID. We had, uh, staff in the, um, treasury working, we had people going to home. So this proposal would be for all of our employees, excluding me. I don't, I don't want to be included in the proposal, so I'm out of it. But, um, the work period eligibility that we looked at would be between March 23rd, 2020, which was the start for one year's period of time, March 22nd, 2021. And we would pay it based on hours worked eligibility, based on 20, 80 hours, which is a, a year of work, as a benchmark. Firefighters would have to be, uh, based on, uh, 2,880. Different work schedule, uh, but employees who worked 519 hours or less would receive 25% of the allocation. Employees who worked 520 to 1,039 hours would receive 50% of an allocation. Between 1,040 and 1,569 would receive 75%. Employees who worked over 1,570 would receive 100%. Given those parameters, including work period eligibility and hours worked, there would be 317 employees eligible to receive hazard pay. And that would be employees who are still with the city as well, because it would be difficult to try to track down employees who left. So, um, if you look at that on the basis of a total, total possible payment of $2,500, with that number of employees, we'd be looking at about $720,000 of total cost. If you increase that to 3,000, um, the total cost would be 864,000 approximately. If you increased it to 3,500, it would be a little over a million dollars. So hopefully, that gives you an idea about some of that. With those parameters, uh, that we listed, and I think that's similar to what some other local units here have given. There aren't a lot, there are a number of them that are not giving that, but we wanted to provide you that framework, since you asked about it. So, um, how to proceed is up to you all. Um, you can ask us to develop a different framework, now that you have an idea about the cost. You can, um, select one of those levels, you can choose to do nothing. If we want to move forward, we can provide you additional information about these, but we also would need to have a letter of understanding with each, each, uh, union group that we have.
So, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you very much. Oh, Lord. I guess, like I said, I want to make sure it comes out correctly. Please, no offense taken by anyone, I just have to say what I have to say. We hired a consulting firm to consult. We went over information in regards to the subcommittee, to subcommit. We've heard, I've heard from two of them tonight. I'm just really not understanding, asking us for this, and what the, um, I don't want to say the rush is, but it's businesses that have closed. It's businesses that are about to close, and I am not, please understand this. I am not, uh, in disagreement saying that we should not, uh, the city should not be, uh, afforded, uh, ARPA funds, or, uh, the persons that work for the city. I'm saying that if we hired persons to come in and do work, why aren't they here tonight to explain? And you said they were in, uh, not saying that you are not being truthful, I'm not saying that at all. But I need to have them here explaining just what they came up with, how they came up with it.
Excuse, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Are you talking about the hazard pay?
All of it, the, where you asked for $25 million.
We're not at that item.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, right.
See, didn't I tell you, don't take it wrong, so don't take it at all.
Yeah, I'm providing information.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That was requested by council.
Okay.
Regarding hazard pay.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting that you should do it or you shouldn't do it, but I wanted to provide you the information.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, approach him, boss.
Yeah. Uh, I appreciate that, uh, Manager Morelos, when you bringing the information to us. I think maybe the, uh, committee should, uh, the council should wait a week, a couple of weeks before we make a decision. We definitely want to give our employees some hazardous pay, that's most definitely, we want to do that. Everybody else has done it, and it'd only be fair if we did it too. So I, I would, uh, think that maybe we wait until maybe the next city council meeting, and maybe we can get some more information to, uh, help us out. Uh, send that information to us, which, how much each person gets, and how much would it be total package? Could you please send that to us and let us marinate on it until the next meeting, and we'll come back with, uh, an answer? Is that good? Can I make the motion that we, uh...
There's no motion. There's no motion?
Fine.
No motion?
I'll just send it to you all, and you can, you can direct me at the next meet.
What else you got?
Councilwoman Serge.
Can you include, um, information, just to be transparent, on what was offered and given or distributed already during the pandemic? Thank you.
Yeah, I can include that in the email for you. I think I had sent that before, but we did provide additional PTO and, um, comp time and things like that. So I can put that all in the email.
Well, that would be good, because when we did that, we have three new ones who came on, who don't know what we did prior to. So that would be good. Moving this way, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Chair. I, did Guide House also look over the, the premium pay, um, proposal?
Um, did we have them review that, Yolanda?
I believe they did look at it.
But, but we know that that's an allowable expenditure anyway, so.
But they looked over...
Yeah, we've talked about most of these plans with them.
Okay. And then, again, just to clarify, it was from March 2020, from the beginning of the pandemic, until March 2021?
Right, for one year period, yeah.
And then that, we wouldn't, was there a reasoning just to include that year? Or it wouldn't extend to 2022 at all?
Yeah, I, I guess our, um, thought behind that was that that was the, the heart of the primary closures for the pandemic. Obviously, if council wants to extend it, then make it longer, then that's something you could do as well. But that, that will increase, increase the numbers. So I'll send you this information. If you have specific questions individually, like if you added time to it or something like that... If you have specific questions individually, like if you added time to it or something like that, you can always send, have that for the next meeting as well.
Yeah, and then it was 317 total?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when I worked out the calculation, just real quick, when I had proposed 13,000, and this was just for first responders, and if we're including everybody into this equation, it would roughly reach, like, $3,714,285. Would be kind of the calculation that I came up with. If we were to do it more on the top end of that, I guess I can get with you email or a meeting just to kind of go over what might, because I've heard from different first responders. One sentiment that they do make is that there is a difference between people that were first responders versus that were administrative staff. And there are other cities that had worked out a formula, where individuals that had kept the city going on the administrative side were paid a premium pay, but not to the level of first responders. So that's also something that I know our first responders are looking at in terms of a model that they would appreciate. But again, I'll get with you afterwards to hopefully go over that. I do agree that everybody, including you, was essential to keeping the city going, yet there is a difference in their mind, and in mine as well, between first responders and administrative staff.
Sure, and I, I would encourage, you know, maybe we can set up some meetings with some other employees so you can hear from them who did work face to face as well. And quite likely, probably were, had more interaction with the public than, than some people in public safety as well.
That, that is kind of the hangup that first responders have is that they've dealt with the public more. Yet, again, we could talk about that later. Just for clarification for everyone else, LOU is just one letter from the two parties that are in a union contract of saying this is what we're proposing for your union members, correct?
Right, it's a letter of understanding. So essentially, you just lay out what you're paying and what, I think in our case, that it wouldn't be included in FAC and so on, and then it expires basically upon payment.
And there, is there any clause where they're able to bargain the effects? Or would we have any pushback against that?
I think you offer them, the city would offer them what, what we're offering. I wouldn't expect any, any bargaining on that.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Yes.
This is just a man. May I ask my question, Manager Morales? This is just a general manager question. For, and it has nothing to do with the, what you just shared. Would we be able to receive a update from our economic development regarding, we've made a couple of comments about businesses who are losing money. Is there any information from local businesses with possibly employees of 20 people or less? The impact of, if we could get anything like that? I haven't heard any, and I know Cassie, but I gotta respond, talk to them.
Yeah, we can see if, if Saginaw Future has any of that information, and maybe it would be good to provide to you a summary of the federal assistance that was provided directly to businesses as well. That didn't, didn't come through the city of Saginaw. I know within the city and the county, it was, it was millions of dollars. But maybe we can give you that information, kind of a summary. It's out there, but you have to search for it. So I know we can probably get that from Saginaw Future. And also, I don't know that there may have been an impact. We have a number of federal contractors in the city too. They might have been impacted, so we can get that information for you as well.
And I was just thinking of small business. I thought about Councilwoman Scherzer, she talked about Daniel's grill had closed. For me, I just was interested to see how the smaller, small businesses within the Saginaw area, city of Saginaw, how those were impacted.
Yeah, we'll see what we can get for you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you so much, Manager Morales. Madam Clerk.
Here, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to accept the agenda, the considered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need a motion to, I need a motion to accept the considered agenda. Leave me room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved to second. Do I have any, do I have any exceptions? Any comment? Calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are now at Board Commission and Committee reports.
Do we have any board reports or commission reports? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at appointment of board and commission members.
I need a motion to approve 1 through 3, leave me room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are at ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first one is to amend the official city map to rezone 3617 Mackinac Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Family Residential.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next ordinance is to amend the official city map to rezone 2138 North Carolina from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our third and final ordinance tonight is to amend the official city map to rezone the area between North Washington Avenue and Farwell and from Roosevelt Austin to North 10th Street from the current zoning to M1 Light Industrial.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this ordinance till the meeting following the, I don't want to say passage of, but the consideration of our master plan.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Now, let me do it right. Madam Clerk, I know you're right. So are we voting on this one or back to the original? On the, on the new motion?
Your discussion would be on the postponement.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the, it's been moved to second. Do we have any discussion on the postponement?
So, and that meeting is, is when?
I believe we're looking at June or July for the introduction or the, yeah.
And that's for the whole new master plan?
For the master plan.
The master plan will come up then. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote.
Excuse me, what are we voting on?
We are, we're voting on.
Postponing.
We're voting on postponing.
Okay, we're voting on postponing, okay.
Until after the master plan is discussed then. It's either June or July.
I think, I think that's going to be extended because of.
Don't say that. Please don't say that. Please don't say that.
Just so you have the information, it will be.
You think so?
Yeah, I think it will be. But whenever that happens to be, you can just say, I think the motion is fine the way it is. And you will, you will have to pass the master plan.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
Consideration, you will have to pass.
Although you didn't understand what he was saying. The master plan, we thought would be ready in July. It's going to take a little longer to make sure that we got all the i's and t's. And so the motion on the floor is to extend it till after we pass the master plan. Am I correct?
I believe that is her motion, yes.
Okay, that, that's the motion. So we need to do a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Ball. Councilmember Scherzer.
No.
Osterstache is absent. Councilmember Flores.
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bench.
Aye.
Mayor Moore.
You need my vote for that.
We have six yes and two no. So the motion is approved to postpone.
Madam Clerk.
Our next order of business is resolutions. First one is authorizing an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate at 2138 North Carolina Street.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution for the night is authorizing the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act funds to pay for the general governmental services to extent of lost revenues and employee workers' compensation and medical expense due to the COVID-19 virus.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mayor, Madam Mayor, I would, this has nothing to do with what was just discussed during the manager's report about us postponing. Okay. And then my second question is, this particular portion was not approved by our committee, our ARPA committee, and it is because they felt that we should be the ones to vote, not that they needed more information and they were not comfortable.
No, that was the premium pay.
Okay.
That was the premium pay. That, my understanding is that that was, the consensus was that was an allowable expense, so it's council's decision. I mean, to me, this is similar to that. This is a detailed allowable expense.
And final one is that we, you all just won't give this money and start spending money and all the other stuff. You all will actually still come to council and discuss that.
Right, it has to be approved. I think there are items in here that our reimbursement right now, because we did spend workers' comp and medical expenses that are allowable uses, that's in the resolution. But the other revenue loss money that would be, we would bring those projects back. Thank you.
Councilman Flores, no, it's mayor, not chair. It's mayor. Councilman Flores.
He is Mayor Moore.
I'm Mayor Moore, not chair. I'm Mayor Moore.
Thank you for the correction. I, I apologize. I thought those were Robert's rules. All right, Mayor, thank you so much. With, one of the questions that I had asked was if there would be the ability for individual residents to be given tax forgiveness if we're going to be using this to recoup tax revenue? Is that a possibility at all or no?
Excuse me, we have a point of order, please. What are we talking about?
This resolution.
Okay, let's stick to the resolution then.
Right, yeah, we're not, you have to stay on topic of what the resolution covers, not other ideas, other topics of it. You have to stay on the topic of the resolution as it's written.
We, we don't have any projects or expenditures that we are proposing at this time. This is just to reserve that amount that is in the revenue loss category.
Would we be able to go project by project without allocating all this, these funds?
I mean, potentially you could. It was recommended to us months ago that we do this.
Right.
I mean, I can't, it might have even been last summer. It was recommended that this would be a best practice to take this step and do it.
And that was by Plant Moran or Guide?
Actually, it was prior to even establishing it, when we were working with Dr. Scorsone. That was one of his recommendations that he made to us.
Okay, and back then it was $20 million, but then after doing the final rules calculation, it?
Yep, as I mentioned, it's actually reserving potentially 25 million. We have the first two years calculated that is in the packet. We'll have to redo that calculation every year. It could be more, it could be less. We might not use all of that, but you can, council can reallocate that.
Okay. And let me know if this is out of bounds. But when I got this information, I went to the final rules, read through it, and then did page by page. And then in the final rules, on page 233, it says it allows recipients experiencing budget shortfalls to use payments for SL, SLFRF, which is the social security funds, to avoid cuts to government services and thus enabling states, local, and tribal governments to continue to provide valuable services and ensure that they're not hampered from, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just sorry, trying to get the mayor's attention, and she acknowledged me. I'm just failing to understand how this is related to. I just feel like we're off topic once again.
Let me say this. She was talking, I was listening to you, and I just acknowledged her just a minute. So, you know, what I'm understanding is, is that what we are voting on right now is this one resolution. And it incorporate, it encompasses government serving and expenditures and workman's comp. And somehow or another, we got off into this and that, and I just got totally lost myself. So, Ms. Flores, I need you and all council members, not just you, I'm sorry, to, to let's stay focused on our topics. And then under miscellaneous, I hate to do this, Ms. Jan, but under miscellaneous, we can go back and ask those questions, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. This is specific to the ARPA final rules for lost revenue. So this is what we're voting on for the city. Yes, or?
Is that what we're voting on?
I think you're voting on the allocation of lost revenue.
Correct.
But you're not voting on specific items that that allocation is going to be spent towards at this time.
Correct. So I'm, so given that language from the final rules for lost revenue, I'm just asking, had there been any cuts to government through 2020 to 2021?
Well, I mean, specific cuts? I don't think so, but we've allocated fund balance to cover some of those costs.
Okay, those are my two.
Are you done? No, I'm looking at you, Mr. Councilman Flores. I thought you were getting ready to say something else.
I said I had the two questions, and then she had her hand up. I thought we were doing that rule.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
I wanted to know if these funds, if agreed upon, if you do not utilize those particular funds, like you say, go up or down. I'm thinking down. Does that vote have to come back to the council in regards to dispersing those funds to another area?
I think you could just allocate them. I don't know that you have to bring them out of that reserve. So part of the reason, I think, going back to when we were talking about having the committee and several of the members, I think it was even said at one of the meetings, is we want to know how much, and Councilman Copeland was at that meeting, so it was the first meeting, that we, they want to know the dollar amount that they're working with. And I think that's important to have out there. You could do it a number of ways, but that's what people under, you know, you're looking at. Okay, we've got 26 million or whatever happens.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Osterstache is absent. Councilmember Flores.
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench. Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have six yes and two nay. The motion is approved. Your resolution is adopted. That takes us to unfinished business. And we have the postponed resolution pledging to follow best practices of civility and civil discourse.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion.
Is this on the original, what was printed? Okay.
This is the original.
Oh, the amended language was not included?
Yes.
There, there is no amended language yet, because there have been no approved motions to amend. It was only postponed, so it's in its original form.
Okay. So when I had submitted the, um, the resolution that I had submitted, that's not...
That language was shared with council as a potential amendment you might raise tonight?
Okay, uh, that's the line.
No motions to amend it.
Oh, thank you. Well, I motioned to amend, uh, this language to the, uh, language that I had submitted to council.
There's a motion on the floor. I need a second to amend the original to the amendment of...
Language, or do you need to see it again?
Everybody should have it.
Thank you.
No, what?
Because I thought what we got in the packet was with, with, uh, Councilman, uh... Flores had added, so I get really confused when they do that.
No, we ended up getting, we ended up at the last meeting, and shortly after that, he was asked to turn to send it in. We just got it this week, or last week sometime when we, when we got it.
But as, as a summary, the, the original motion was postponed.
Right. The original motion that was in the package last meeting.
Okay, so let me ask this, so I can be clear, because this is the second time this happened. So, for the language that, for his proposal, how would that have gotten in there if we still only working on the original?
He would have to make a motion at this meeting.
How it has to is right now.
Okay.
He has to make a motion to put it in there.
Okay.
Then we take a vote.
Okay. And he has made that motion, and so far, there has been no second.
Oh, second.
And I was go- I, I wasn't done.
Oh.
To either original.
No.
Oh, not, not to amend the original, I'm sorry. There's been no, uh, second to the amendment.
There is a motion on the floor, excuse me. There's a motion on the floor to amend by Councilman Flores. It has been moved. Is it seconded?
I'm seconding that.
It has been seconded. Open for discussion.
The one, uh, Mayor Moore.
Yes.
The one thing I did see in what he updated was, at the end, um, where he said, "Now therefore be resolved by the city council for the city of Saginaw", enlisted all the different commissions and all of that, and the one that we had, it didn't have that. It just said city council.
There's, there's, it's actually a full rewrite, um, what was originally proposed.
Yes. Amendment, please.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm just confused, and I need clarification. We have an, a resolution that was written by, requested by Michael Balls, and that is what is included in the council agenda packet. And I'm just confused as to what the amendment is, because the resolution we've been provided is an entire rewrite. So I don't know how...
That's why I got confused, because I usually write it in red, sorry.
Yeah, it's just, I'm, so I'm just confused as to how that works.
Excuse me, Ma- Madam Mayor. That's my confusion also, because when I looked, I was like, usually, or I thought usually, it's highlighted, and I just got totally confused today.
Well, the whole thing would be highlighted.
Right. I think that, let, let me, let me try, let me try to smooth it over. I think what happened was, was that, Councilman Flores, you correct me if I'm wrong. You did this. You, you, you typed this, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And so normally, and you understand what they're saying, normally, when we see changes, we see the original, and then we see everything in highlight red.
Yeah.
And so, we didn't...
Yeah, when I, I, thank you, Mayor. When I had spoken with the city clerk, she had said to, uh, submit the language. Now, I did that on Tuesday, just so if there was any issue bringing this up, that we would, uh, hopefully discuss that before he would submit it into the agenda. But, um...
The language I asked for was your previous meeting's motion to amend. I wanted that language, that I needed for the amendment. But I was able to obtain that by listening at word for word for word for word off of the recording. So you submitted the language, which is a whole rewrite of the resolution. It wasn't what you stated during that last council meeting.
Correct. When I had been questioned by Councilwoman Bench and said that I had something to add to bullet point to nine, then they said to table it, to submit all the language, and then to vote on it at that time.
But it was, but your resolution was postponed. Council agreed to postpone the whole resolution. Nothing was amended. Nothing was amended. It was postponed in its original form.
Correct.
So when you sent this, it's, I can't change it. Council has to amend it or make changes, and that's by motions.
But it needs to be stricken and then in red?
No, I, I think the simplest course and explanation is that at this point, you have made a motion to amend this resolution, taking out the language of the original proposal in its entirety and replacing it with what you have submitted. Right.
Yes, correct, that's...
That is the motion on the table.
That's why I motioned.
That's the motion on the table. Okay. Let, let, let me say it again. Gonna make this simple. There's a motion on the floor to change the entire resolution versus going with the one that we got. So the motion on the floor is to change. Yes, Councilwoman?
Okay. See. Can this be postponed again? Because I'm, I'm still stuck on the highlighting. Can it, can a motion be postponed again? Or whatever? Can this be postponed?
Court, we're...
And then we get the, I, y'all, oh, Jesus.
Madam Clerk.
Well, you have the motion to amend before you.
Okay.
So if you want, if you want to postpone the resolution again, that is appropriate. You would postpone it if it's approved. Otherwise, you have to consider the amendment in its entirety. That's where we're at right now.
So I can ask for postponement?
After we take the vote.
Ah, okay.
Right, or before we take the vote?
She could, she can post, she can postpone.
You could, so you...
Someone could postpone. You can postpone the motion to amend.
Oh.
No, it, wow, no. You're right. Thank you, Amy. I am corrected. You wouldn't postpone the amendment.
You'd postpone the original motion.
Mm-hmm.
Again, okay.
And can I plead, can I do that?
Right now, we are on the amendment portion.
We are on the amendment portion. Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Just for clarification, I have, uh, language that includes the, sorry, guys. All the changed language in red. I guess I misunderstood the clerk when, uh, it was instructed to send all the information in. I can easily just resubmit this if need be. And then, second, the majority of the language, if, uh, council members had read both resolutions, is similar, and this is off of a template from the League of Women Voters that had been put out there in 2018. It's mainly for a law that had happened in California where they needed to adopt, um, civility and civil discourse for their own meetings. This is kind of spread nationwide for one reason or the other, due to politics, since 2018. When I looked up the original language submitted by the Mayor Pro Tem, a lot of this is in there. Now, there are some differences. So, uh, for the sake of, you know, clarification, I hope everybody that I had sent emails this morning to each of you to look at all the citations that I had, now hopefully, everybody received those citations that I'd used from different cities and localities that passed this resolution as well. But I had thought, you know, that everybody would be prepared to discuss this in its entirety. If not, I do apologize, and I, I would, um, will vote on this, and then hopefully table it till, we'll see what can happen.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to say all that.
I would like to call for the vote. I mean, this, all we doing is a civility, uh, resolution, and we going through weeks and weeks and weeks just to tell everybody, just to be kind to each other, and let everybody have their opinion on things. So this getting just carried away, man. We, it, it don't make no sense for us to keep going through this. It don't make any sense, man. We looking like, like Keystone Cops up here, trying to get a little, a little resolution passed about, let's treat everybody nice up here, when we talking. So I would like to call for the vote.
We gonna call for the vote.
We need a second to that motion.
A second to the motion. Now, which motion are we seconding now? Are we seconding?
Call for the vote. The call for the vote.
Call for the vote. So we did the call for the vote. So now, we're voting on...
Calling for the vote. Calling for the vote.
Calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Now, Ms. Jan.
Roll call, we got a nay.
Roll call vote.
Ostashes absent, uh, Councilmember Flores.
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have, um, I'm sorry, seven and one. So call for the vote has been approved.
May I call for the vote for the acceptance of the amendment?
Now, you're...
We're back to the original?
The amendment motion is before you. So you called for the vote, we're taking a vote.
Gotcha.
No more discussion, we just ended it.
Sorry. Did anyone want to say anything?
We need a vote on the amendment.
We need to vote on the amendment. That's where I was trying to go to. On which amendment? The amendment by...
Amendment by Flores.
By Flores, by Councilman Flores. We're taking a vote for the amendments, to accept the amendments by Councilman Flores. We call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Oh, no.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote, please. No, 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 I'm...
Councilmember Flores.
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland.
No.
Lamar Sylvia is out. Councilmember Williams.
Nope.
Councilmember Bench, nope. Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
No.
Councilmember Scherzer.
No.
Councilmember Ostashes absent, Mayor Moore.
No.
We have one yes and six no. And one absent.
Does that mean the original?
So the amendment is denied. So now you have the main motion on your regular resolution before you to discuss.
It's already been moved.
Already have a motion.
It's seconded. So now, let's call for the vote. I'm sorry.
Mayor, I do want to say this, or, because with this amended, uh, resolution, I did print both them out and actually go through them, and the language was the same, except two stanzas that were taken out and four that were added. And actually, one of them talked about bringing this up every year for us to actually review. I think that was a good idea, because if we pass these and we never bring them back up, it's pointless, because tonight, we really didn't show civility and discourse in some of our communications. So it may be easy to pass, but it's going to be more for us to actually act on these, and hopefully, at our next meetings, although we are here late, we are public servants, and we still have to show that same respect to all of our colleagues. Now, we can move to the vote, if we would like.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I think where the, the differences between the two specifically come into play is that the pledge itself, this pledge for civility, the action item, all of those action items in the original are listed under the now therefore clause, which is an act, which is where the action of your resolution occurs. In the draft proposed by Councilmember Flores, those were moved up to whereas clauses, and your whereas clauses in a resolution are your background information and your facts. So, it, that, that pledge portion had kind of gotten shuffled around.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did have, we're still in discussion right now, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So I did have some questions about the original resolution. I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem that the majority of this is just a template. I mean, it is word for word, uh, for the majority of the other resolutions that I looked up that were passed in California. There are some differences, though, and that's what I was, um, hoping to either change or acknowledge. So, in terms of acknowledging, when it states that it's to become policy, would that be in line with our code of conduct? Because I know a lot of this stuff is covered in our code of conduct, or would it be different? Or how would this be enforceable? I guess I'm having, uh, a hard time reconciling that, and that's the fourth whereas in the first line. So Mayor Pro Tem, what do you mean, when it would become policy?
I'll tell you, man, y'all spending too much time on this, man. I'm tired of fucking with, all I want to do is get the vote over and get this over with so we can have, uh, and be civil with each other about little stuff like this, man. We wasting too much time on little stuff. We on, this is little stuff, man. It's little stuff. I'm telling you, guys, this is little stuff, man. Let's, I can help some of these kids out here that's getting killed. Let's go mentor some of these kids out here, man.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor, um, it doesn't matter, at, when we got on council, we all signed and made a pledge. In addition, we are humans, so we should allow grace and civility to run in our veins when we are sitting at this table and when we're not. If you cannot be accountable as a councilperson, you need to look at yourself. I agree, we're looking way too far into this. And no matter if you put a piece of paper in front of me, or you make a resolution, I have the choice to decide if I'm going to be human with grace and accountability or just malicious. And with that being said, I would like to call for the vote on the original presented motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second. No more discussion, right? Calling for the vote. All those in favor. Ms. Jan, you ready? I apologize, because I didn't mean that. I was like trying to hear. So, we're calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by, on, this vote is on the original.
No, this is uncalling the question.
Call for the vote.
It's called for the vote. Okay, we're ending debate. Call for the vote, it's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
You ready for your vote?
Now we call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we're at miscellaneous business. We do have an item here, is for a closed session, for a strategy session connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements for MCL 15.268, section C.
I need a, I need a motion to approve...
So moved, support.
Then, I do, I need, I do, I need to do the roll call vote, though, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
We're going into closed session.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Yes.
Member Scherzer.
Shh. Yes.
Ostashes absent, Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Eight yes votes, zero nay. Motion is approved.
I need a motion to go back into open session.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, uh, I move that we approve the tentative agreement that was discussed in closed session this evening. The agreement is between the City of Saginaw and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for the term to commence on July 1st, 2022, and to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the tentative agreement that was discussed in closed session this evening. The agreement is between the City of Saginaw and the Police Officers Association of Michigan for the term to commence on July 1st, 2022, and to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Okay.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the tentative agreement that was discussed in closed session this evening. The agreement is between the City of Saginaw and the International Association of Firefighters for the term to commence on July 1st, 2022, and to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second that.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And lastly, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the tentative agreement pending union ratification that was discussed in closed session this evening. The tentative agreement is between the City of Saginaw and the Service Employees International Union, including the salaried hourly and part-time collective bargaining units for the term to commence on July 1st, 2022, and to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Okay.
It's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
If there's any other business?
Do we have any other business? No other business. I need a motion to adjourn. Wait, wait, wait. We haven't finished it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. You can't just jump up.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, get out of here.